Okay, good evening, everybody. It is six oh four P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting the legislative allegiance. Okay, thank you very much, members present include myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Bovenheim, Supervisor Michael Albert, Missionary Coordinator Jessica Hodge, Conservation and Recreation Director Dr. Alex Jackson, Township Engineer Julia Heilica, Engineers John Tressler, Malicia Hutchison, Solicitor Ron Parasad. Announcements this evening, there was an executive session from approximately five thirty P M to five fifty-three P M regarding litigation, the vacuum matter, um, plenty, attorney claim privilege matters and security. Tomorrow evening, there's Rivers Edge Bike Park Meeting here at six o'clock P M. Um, I also wanted to note the fall pick up the Poconos that we're doing. It's actually Friday, October tenth, so we'll make sure that that is advertised accordingly. As you can see, we have a fairly lengthy agenda. Our goal is to end the meeting by nine o'clock P M tonight. Um, so we're going to conduct it in orderly fashion to achieve that. First order of business is the consent agenda, which includes the consideration of approval of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five joint session minutes. The July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Google Special Event Product for Faith International Church Community Harvest Fest. Consideration to approve the PMRS Minimum Municipal Obligation Worksheet for twenty twenty-six. Consideration to ratify seasonal parks employment for Robert Hartley. Consideration of our August twenty twenty-five bill pack, that's the whole month. Total of two hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars and forty-nine cents amongst the general fund, Professional Astro Fund, Capital Improvements Fund, and Liquid Fuels. Do you want to hear a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second. Mr. Bovenheim, questions? Um, hold on one sec. Board first.
I just go ahead. I do have a credit card, the Ramp Credit Card. Julia?
Yes, it's been included of
Is it at the end there?
Yeah, it's at the back of the whole package if you requested.
Okay, perfect. It's that page, sorry. Um.
Well, good.
Give me thirty seconds, sorry. Okay, no more question, no questions.
Thank you.
One, can you just give a clear voice a little bit so we can hear in the background?
Sure.
Uh, on the bill package, there is a though that you guys paid the Monroe County Conservation District. Can you clarify what that is for?
That's for the N P D E S permit at Waterfront Park.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
There was a payment to a Williams Samson, so it's time for final payment number four, twenty grand is out to the statues.
Yes, that was a final payment.
So have they been installed?
We had them, we're protected yet.
Oh, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, reports, awareness services to everyone from Marshall's Creek that wanted to speak. Not seeing any. Ron, Solicitors Report.
Based upon the length of this agenda, I'm not going to give any report tonight, if you're prepared.
Sounds good. Okay, done?
Uh, I'm just
Same.
Yeah.
You've got the presentation.
Okay, I see. We'll do that now so we can get you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this will be the presentation for your MS four program. Um, it's a requirement to provide an opportunity for the public to solicit questions every year. So this is how we do that. And Alex is pulling up a presentation now. You go to the sign us. Um, so this is the definition of MS four. Um, it's conveyance, our system of conveyances, including roads, drainage systems, municipal streets, catchways, and perched gutters, swales, et cetera. Um, that are owned or operated by a township having their jurisdiction over its discharge, is designed or used for collecting or conveying stormwater. It is not combined sewer, and it is not part of publicly owned through notes. Excellent.
Hmm.
Okay. So
What was the presentation all of last time?
I don't think it's cropped out. It's just close it and then reopen the file. Just scroll from there instead of going.
Okay, um, the Smithfield Township received their original permit in two thousand and eighteen. That permit expired November thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. We did submit a renewal package to D E P back in March of twenty twenty-three. Um, the application is still under review, but I did have conversations with D E P. And they requested some additional information, which I provided. They said you should have your draft permit by the end of this.
This week?
This week.
Wow.
Draft permit, so it'll have to be advertised. And then about thirty days later, you'll have it filed. And that permit will extend from now until twenty-third. So it won't go back. It'll give you that five years.
And you have to have a permit, correct?
Yes. Under the permitting, uh, the township is required to follow six minimum control measures. Um, and so I'm just going to go through those six pretty quick. The first one is public education outreach, which requires reviewing and updating your program, the public education program. Uh, reviewing and updating uh, publishing to stormwater educational information to do do through your website every year. And again, distribute stormwater educational information via the website, Facebook, et cetera. Excellent. Minimum Control Measure Number Two is Public Involvement and Participation. And again, you have to review and update your public participation program. Advertise and solicit public input for any changes to your stormwater management ordinance. And solicit public involvement and participation, which is what this meeting is for. And then we're already on slide for minimum control measure number three.
What up?
Back one. There you go. Uh, this is for illicit discharge detection and elimination. So again, you review your program. You maintain your outfall mapping and storm sewer system mapping. Uh, T N M conducts dry weather screenings for the township twice per five-year permit period. Uh, we did leak those in October of last year. D E P confirmed we can use this with for these next five years. So you only have to do it one more time, even though you're just renewing your permit.
We have to wait till the permit happens before we can do it?
No, no, he said October twenty twenty-four counts.
Okay.
Um, and act as stormwater management ordinance, which you already have. And provide education outreach to public employees and target audiences. Uh, you have public works training, uh, through the MS four program every year, and, uh, you provide some illicit discharge information on your website. Minimum Control Measure Number Four is Construction Site Stormwater Runoff Control. So the township should ensure that all applicants have an N P D S approval prior to building permit. Uh, the township notifies the conservation district of any earth disturbance activity of one acre or more. And you enforce ordinances requiring erosion controls. And then Minimum Control Measure Number Five is Post-Construction Stormwater Management. Again, you enforce ordinances requiring post-construction stormwater. You develop and implement low-impact development where appropriate. And enforce proper operation and maintenance of those, um, stormwater B M Ps. And the last minimum control measure is number six for pollution prevention and good housekeeping. This is related to township, uh, properties, parks, your facility here. Um, review and update township operations related to stormwater runoff. Develop and maintain an operation and maintenance program and continue employee training. So those are the items that you do complete every year. Um, another part of your MS four permit is your pollutant reduction plan. The approved plan, um, sorry, the plan was approved in two thousand and eighteen. And the township is required to reduce about seventy-five thousand pounds of sediment through here, uh, through that program. Um, Alex and I took a visit to Sambo Creek a little while ago. Been a while now, um, but that's one area where the township could, uh, provide B M Ps such as stream restoration to reduce that seven. And then there is annual reporting requirements. Um, every year, there's status report due September thirtieth, and there's a twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's it. If there's any questions?
Good time, board? Excellent, as always.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, Melissa.
Yes.
So I'm here, the M S four program is basically to ensure better quality of stormwater discharge.
That's correct.
Quantity.
Right.
Not where it's going, not how it's going, but better quality discharge.
Correct.
That's what the program is about.
Yes.
This, when we're talking about D E P, we're talking about the state.
Yes.
So this is a state requirement.
Yes.
Therefore, everyone.
What else?
That's going to speed up the process of like obtaining an N P D S permit or it's not? Okay, so it's kind of useless.
It's just a requirement.
Fine, thank you very much.
Right, you're welcome.
Okay, Julie. Have to manage to report anything to the board?
A couple of quick things. Uh, in July, the township received seven write-to-knows. So far in August, we've received eight. Uh, brand totals for the year to date are seventy-three write-to-knows, which would have takes in eighty-five and six hours of staff time. Uh, nineteen permits were issued in July. The green light go grant, green light go grant is nearly closed out. And, uh, and I'm in the process of preparing to submit at least three L S A statewide applications. So I'm going to be a little busy in the coming months. Uh, two of them are usually fire companies, and one of them will be for security and this object.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Alex, you have a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Environmental Advisory Council at this point has three recommendations to supervisors, uh, through a number of events, July thirteenth, and not only one most recently, uh, August fifteenth, um, the first of which relates to uh, the map. The council put together a concept for bike lanes along the Endopur Fairs. Uh, some of their other concepts included major road re-alinements, uh, like, and also, um, recognizing the Borough of the Falls and Twin Falls as potential future parks. The, uh, recommendation basically, um, included a draft that, that a subcommittee put together on the Environmental Advisory Council, and they're asking the board to consider discussing, um, whether or not there's support for this concept, and if so, um, they could reach out to the county and request technical assistance. So that's their recommendation. That's the first one.
Ask question?
Yeah.
Um, they're asking for us to consider all, all three of those items?
Um, this is just sort of a, um, an idea. Doesn't necessarily have to be the end result. It's just here are some ideas. Does this seem like something that's within the wavelength of the supervisor, something you'd be willing to engage with the county and see if it's possible and what the options, what the options are? The county had let us know that it needs unanimous support by the supervisors, um, if they want, if you guys want to have a follow-up discussion and and pursue this. So that's sort of up to the board, you know, if you want to, you know, maybe reach out to the county and let them know that there's unanimous support, and maybe set something up for next year so you can start putting this on the projects. It's up to the board. How do you want to proceed? It's, it's a recommendation from the advisory council.
Right.
It could be good to get a little bit more into the, the data that they use, the recommendation, and we talk with them about that at some point before we take that next step.
Yeah, and can we, maybe this, that's very short sort of report. On this point, can we put it on the agenda for a future meeting to have a more formal presentation from E A C on what they're thinking about, that we can decide when to invest resources into it?
That makes sense.
Fair.
The other recommendation they, um, are sending to the board is to edit the, um, ordinance for the Environmental Advisory Council on membership to simply, um, revise the non-voting members into alternate members who could then, um, step in and fill form and vote if some of the regular members are absent. So it'd sort of be like, you know, instead of just being a permanent non-voting member, if regular members happen to be active, the, the alternate members of the ordinance, if the ordinance is edited, would allow them to actually help fill meat form and vote on things so that the organization can continue. That's their recommendation. It's basically just to weaken the language that would allow a little bit more flexibility for the organization. Um, the third recommendation is on the data center ordinance update. The council believes it's good policy to update the criteria outlined in this ordinance to more effectively regulate the use of data centers, data accessory, um, uses, and then, uh, disaster recovery facilities, and they voted unanimously in favor of recommending that township supervisors, um, adopt these ordinance updates. They also had a recommendation of, um, adding criteria in the utility section to, um, demonstrate that water is not the primary pool and for use. So that was recently voted on.
That's just adding a phrase. That's Has that not already been, is that not on the? Have we moved that to, um, to a date?
Now, the Planning Commission gets it next, their next meeting.
The Planning Commission discussed data centers and the ordinance update at their last meeting on August fourteenth. Um, since then, Alex put those changes into effect and has emailed it to Ron, I believe, yesterday.
So Planning Commission had very specific
Yeah.
Changes.
Planning Commission looked at it. It's on Ron's desk right now as of less than twenty-four hours ago for legal review.
Yeah.
It will be on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for September ninth for you to consider, and then from
And then it has to go back to them again because
If you choose to put it in the formal pipeline at that time, then it will have to go to the Monroe County Planning Commission, as well as our planning commission again for formal consideration.
October twenty-eighth for our build on that.
But that means that if we can get whatever suggestion is from the E A C to Ron, and then on our next agenda, that is what's important.
Yep.
All right.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, from the A C.
I was gonna say, wasn't there an update on Pat?
Anyone update? Yeah, Pat Owens, um, she's, um, she's been asked it for a while, although she's having some personal situations. Um, I look forward to speaking to her hopefully soon, and we're getting update time.
Thank you. Tara Masnadi is not here, so there's no I eighty or state, uh, state with six eleven report. Sorry, there's no Tara Masnadi is not here, so there's no I eighty or state with six eleven report this evening. Supervisors comments, Michael, Robert, anything?
Did you move my sign, my signage was in there somewhere else?
It's the first one under new business.
Okay, all right. That was my only comments I wanted to talk about.
Awesome. Robert, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Their old business. We have a public hearing on draft ordinance number two fifty-seven, self-storage facilities regulations. They're appropriately advertised and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Ron, do you have any housekeeping on that as far as the advertisements?
Or to know the advertisements were all, uh, taken care of. Uh, I, I did not do them. My image was viewed them, but I don't believe I sent them out.
Yeah, uh, I sent them out. Uh, we do have affidavits publication stating that the solicitor's advertisement was advertised on July thirtieth. And the two advertisements that are required by a township were advertised on August sixth and August thirteenth. This ordinance, uh, regulates self-storage facilities and was recommended by our zoning officer after we reviewed our code and did not find, um, any additional information under section five eleven. Um, as a reminder to all parties, um, the self-storage facilities that exist in the township right now have been approved for conditional use and/or litigation.
So they will present, they will be permitted by, uh, by right in the industry, this written and conditional use in the economic development zone. But it adds a lot of things, like basically make sure people don't live there. And, uh, other prohibited uses, basically letting it be a business, regulate the lighting and outdoor storage. Couple engineering tweaks on fencing and the driveway width between the buildings. Any comment on that before I entertain the motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion by Mr. Bovenheim. Here a second.
A second.
Second, Mr. Albert, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I will entertain the motion to adopt draft ordinance number two thirty-seven, self-storage, self-regulation.
I'll make that motion for the second.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Mr. Bovenheim. Any last questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under new business, the first item is feedback on the sign ordinance update. Michael, you asked specifically for this, I think. The idea is to feedback on a couple key, uh, key things so we can move forward.
Yeah, so I'll try to be quick. Um, oh, and you pointed the whole thing out. It was very nice. Um, we discussed the last meeting, as you know. There was a subcommittee that included Dave Strunk, um, Alex and myself that have been drafting a completely revised signage ordinance. Um, we had a lot of healthy discussion, I think, at the last meeting, as well as some concerns and some things that I personally couldn't answer. Largely related to differences between our current zoning and our on this issue and our current ordinance, ordinances on signage and the new one. Alex was kind to put that into this sort of large format, and because it is a hundred percent rewrite of all signage, um, it's a little bit messy. There's entire sections that are absent at the beginning and, um, or on the, what we used to have, and entire sections are absent on what we currently have because it didn't sign up. But effectively, the committee wanted to sort of get feedback from the supervisors on the approach that we're considering taking, which is effectively, because there was some pushback on the idea of approving this giant seventy-page new ordinance, what you guys felt, and myself as well, felt about trying to tackle sort of pieces. Um, and by that, um, for example, enforcement, there's a, a whole bunch of new, um, options and abilities to veteran force in the new, um, draft ordinance. So that theoretically could just be implemented in its own right, um, as something fairly quickly, and that allows us to act fairly fast. Um, in addition, um, temporary signs and limited duration signs look like they seem to be the most egregious issues that we are seeing in our township. Um, and we're something that we might be able to pass relatively quickly. It would mean that we would have to continue to work on this and improve this as we go forward, but it would certainly be easier for everyone here, as well as the public, to review each step of the way. But it is going to be more working. Before we dive into that, just wanted to check if you guys felt like that was an appropriate way forward, or if you wanted to, um, really want to approve it all in one shot.
I would rather not delay improvement. So I, I think it makes sense to adopt piecemeal what we think is already good to go.
Robert, how do you feel?
Um, either way, but, um, I have some comments on the off premises signs. Several people approached me and I read the notes from that meeting, you know. And I know that, uh, the people who have all premises signs and almost all of them are worried about what's going on here. And, um, uh, I'd like to ask a couple of questions if I may.
Yeah.
Um, I noted that, um, there's a provision where size of the sign is related to the speed limit.
Yeah.
But we only have two speed limits in the E D, so one is thirty-five and one is forty-five. Does that make a difference in that reading the sign?
I think the idea of the ordinance, which is, comes from a, a template that they're a model ordinance, which is actually very similar to the Monroe County model ordinance. But we chose to go with the Montgomery one because we thought it was a little bit better. Um, I think that's, that's just the standard way that most signage events are, are in fact, are there. I guess it also means that if this, if the speed limit is for to change, um, it will change, um, those requirements. And by the way, that's not entirely true because some of our signs are, in our township are actually on Route eighty. There's at least one that is, uh, at presently a fifty-five mile, or fifty mile per hour zone, but it might one day be a lot, lot faster, and so.
I, I would be in favor of instead of using that formula, just use the formula about, uh, standard sizes. And leave it at that. It's much simpler. I, I would say seven hundred and fifty feet between signs on either side of the road, so only one in there can reach seven hundred and fifty feet, only on two roads, two oh nine and Milford Road. And, um, the standard size in the industry are really two. One is called a thirty-sheet billboard, which is about twenty-four by twelve. And the other is a junior poster, which is about six by twelve. An example, the junior posters, one that's on, um, Milford Road between where the Dollar General is and the, the little town of Marshall's Creek. Um, the others along Milford Road are pretty much standard, uh, thirty sheets, they're called, they're, you know, two, uh, twelve by twenty-four. I, I would say just limited to that within the township and say that, uh, anything larger, which are called the superboards, which are, by the way, the ones that are about bulked, uh, two oh nine that were put up long before any of us were there, only could be put up on, uh, like in I eighty. So in effect, we're saying two corridors, two sides. So in effect, we're saying two corridors, two sides and sides, that's it.
You're saying as a maximum or as?
Maximum.
As a maximum.
Yeah.
Now, I'm more open to that that as maximum or listing something as a maximum. I would just say the way this ordinance is drafted, Robert, any sign that. Isn't advertising for something that is not on that property is considered an off-premises sign.
Correct.
Um except for. Um temporary signs that are supposed to take in and must be removed and all sorts of.
I agree with that.
Um. I think. I think that's a section, so one of the things that also came up with that, we're asking, well, why is it three hundred versus two hundred? And because we didn't have the side by side, we didn't have the exact numbers, I think doing this piecemeal way will allow us to be like, okay, right now it's two hundred. It's two hundred square feet, we're proposing one fifty. Um there is, for example, right now, it's um. I think five hundred square uh five hundred linear feet. Where a billboard, an off-premises sign, I should say, is allowed and the new one is suggesting um fifteen hundred feet. So it's good to look at those because maybe that's aggressively different and we should be a little bit more lenient because it's already. An improvement if you don't like these.
So let's let's table that uh section in the doing piecemeal of the things that we have all agree on, which I think is both of them.
And I think, are you guys okay that like enforcement? Um temporary and limited and limited duration signs could be sort of targeted first.
I think we could do that.
Those are the sections that are sort of the weakest in our current ordinances. Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to know, unless there was any comments or questions.
I think that makes sense, like the same. We could do the three of those in one draft ordinance, that would be great.
Yeah.
I know Alex has another one, but.
It's more time, but we're already scheduled. Every every week for at least an hour.
At least most of us is ready, you just have to kind of change the references for the sake of codification.
I'm open if there are any questions.
Questions, comments on signage? Okay.
I'm not here for signage.
All right, uh we have a brief discussion on housing in Smithfield, our engineer performs some research. Uh two different options uh that talk about housing in the township and then economic development corridor. John, I'll let you. Explain those, I think we have a couple people that wanted to comment and then we can sort of. Look toward a direction on that. Uh.
Go up to here. The the. Idea. With this ordinance was. Currently in the ED district. Uh we only permit residential development if it is combined with commercial development from the first book. Uh. That. Probably works in some areas, but. A question was raised, we do have some parcels. In the ED district that do not front on either old two oh nine or new two oh nine, which is where. Uh the majority of the commercial traffic in the township takes place. Uh so these parcels that don't front on either one of those areas. Uh feel that they can't. Develop under the current criteria with the residential being up up top because they're not gonna get any commercial. Uh. Any commercial traffic. So they asked us to investigate. Uh what we would be willing to do to. Uh perhaps allow residential development only in those parcels. That are not on the main thoroughfares, so we came up with. Uh we researched a lot of criteria. And what? What we're offering for consideration. Is. That the developer were to. Provide some incentives to the township. Uh. To permit all residential, then perhaps township would consider. Doing that and the incentives that we came up with would be two. One would be uh if you provide for fifteen percent of disabled. Uh people divide for that within your development. And the other was for uh a lower income. So we've looked at those two possibilities. Uh we presented those and cons. Before the township and that's where we are with the tip, if I don't know, do you want me to run through the extra scenario or not?
Yeah, if you wanna run through the folk options and then I I think. Robert, Michael, some stuff, I know we have some other folks that like to contribute too.
For parcels with no direct access to Route two oh nine or Business two oh nine. Section twenty-seven, three oh eight, like three point F subsections two through four may be waived by the board of supervisors. If the development's residential components meets the following conditions. A disabled household residential obligation in lieu of commercial space requirements. Fifteen percent of total annual rental unit months are required to be occupied by a disabled households. Property owner is not required to meet specific rental rate or income restriction requirements with this alternative. That must meet the fifteen percent occupancy requirements as defined in this section. Two for B, annual rental unit months are computed as total available rental units for the development multiplied by the number of months. Each unit was under an active lease contract. Or once that any units were not under lease uh in total. The penalty for failure to meet annual rental unit month requirements is forfeited to township. An amount equal to the average monthly rent of all units across the development multiplied by the on met number of rental unit months necessary. To meet the residential obligation requirement in such an A above. The enforcement. Property owner or the agent must submit an annual self-prepared review and calculation of total rental unit months for the development overall. And total normal rental unit months for the occupied by the population in a problem. Report and any penalties are due by the fourteenth of February following the reporting year. Penalties for for failure to submit the report on time or submit payment for not meeting the kind of population threshold. Will be determined by the township. The township may require an audit of the data by a neutral third party. Disabled household is defined as any household with one or more permanent residents. Meeting the U S Code of Federal Regulations definition of. What person with disabilities close quote. As defined in twenty-four CFR five point four oh three. Who legally claims a unit as their primary residence. And then I do have some examples of how that income would work and I don't know.
I'm gonna go for this one now.
I think I just want. Market rate alternative.
Fine, it's fine, I I mean, I I'm reading, I I see it here, I don't need it.
I think we should be clear in that these are not active. Options that we decided to consider changing tonight, they were just. Research the engineer conducted on other municipalities and what they've been doing. And I think we all recognize the housing issue, but there's a lot of different ideas on how to confront that.
Well, I also, I think that. Based on the last discussion we had on this, um a lot of people were concerned about the income level of people that would be renting these apartments. And it's actually quite high. Um Tom Campbell is here from the county and he can give us uh some of these figures, but. You know, I'm looking at a chart here that says a family of two, the median income is eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars, it's not. It's above what most people are making here is nurses, teachers, um public employees. So we're not talking about um. You know, uh. Uh section eight, it's a section eight of housing we're talking about, people that just need um. A little help in meeting the rent and the rent is defined as thirty percent of what your income is. So Tom, do you wanna elaborate on that?
My name is Tom Campbell, I'm with Hook and Melt's United Way and also with community development of Hook Notes, which is a nonprofit to try to get more housing developed. Um so a little about what the numbers are. I know what I pay for my mortgage, um and you probably all know what your mortgages are and what your rents are. In our area, they do something they call fair market rent, in fact, actually that's across the whole United States, they do this calculation. Fair market rent in our area is, according to the U S government. You should be able to get a two-bedroom apartment for sixteen eighty. And if you're deluged, you are not gonna find that. But you should be able to find a a two-bedroom apartment for sixteen eighty, um you should be able to find a three-bedroom for twenty-two hundred dollars. These are numbers that basically they come up with that are. Forty percent of the houses that are for rent, you should be able to find for this amount or less. And sixty percent of the houses you're gonna rent or apartments you're gonna rent are going more than this, that's what fair market rent is. So this ordinance, the concept is is that regardless of what the person's income is. The developer is gonna have to be set that if they do the fit, if they do the um the the fixed income portion or the for the rental portion, they. The rent uh restriction uh portion of it, they would basically have to meet these requirements. So they would have to make sure that if they've got two bedrooms in there, they need to offer them the sixteen eighty. And the truth of matter is is. The way that they figure out, like, how much should you be able to pay for your rent? You should basically not be spending more than thirty percent of whatever it is your household makes on your rent. That's pretty much what they consider and the less you make, the harder it is to do that. You know, if you're making, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, thirty percent of that, yeah, that's pretty easy to find something, it's actually pretty nice. But if you're only making fifty K, that's all your household's making. You're not gonna be able to afford a whole lot, in fact, actually, if you're making fifty K. You shouldn't be spending one thirty percent of your income. And that's about twelve hundred fifty bucks, that's how much your rent should be. In fact, actually, that's how much you should be paying for rent plus your utilities. And that's the problem. There isn't any of that around here, there's just no place for somebody who's making fifty K or sixty K or even seventy K and find rent. That they can afford. That's what this is trying to do, it's trying to say basically that we need to have rent that people can afford. You can build your apartment complex, it can be twenty-two hundred dollars a month for most units in there, but you gotta make sure that either. Fifteen percent of them are available for disabled people. Regardless of what the rent is, or fifteen percent of them have to be within these rent limits, so if they've got a one-bedroom. It shouldn't be more than twelve hundred eighty, they've got a two-bedroom, it should be more than sixteen eighty, and if they've got a three-bedroom, it should be more than twenty-two hundred. That's what they're asking, they wanna make sure that there are rents available for people who live here can actually afford to live in. Certainly, there are rents that people that people are working over in New York City and they can drive back and forth, they can afford more expensive salary. And there are some people who are basically making some good coin, but they can afford expensive stuff, but if you're working at Home Depot. And your wife is working at Red Robin, making rent local is really, really hard, you just can't find it. That's what this is an effort to do, if you're gonna build something, yes, you can go ahead and make rents that a lot of the a lot of us can afford. But you gotta make some of it, but those of us living here, working here can actually afford, and that's what the goal of it is.
And this doesn't um impact our commercial area because our commercial areas are really two oh nine and Milford Road, period, that's it. And we're talking Independence Road or Brown Street, um nobody's gonna open a business on Brown Street. Um and Independence Road. You know, it's mainly medical, I don't know how many stores wanna be on Independence Road. And and part of it is looking at uh uh traffic counts and seeing that those streets have a lot less. Than our commercial corridors, which are are two. And I I think um. Two oh nine is about, I don't know, nineteen thousand vehicle trips a day and um Milford Road is about ten or twelve. Um the the other streets are far below there.
Got a comment? Um. Sure, we we had a conversation, right, and we go back and forth and obviously you know I'm, you know, former former CEO for United Way, I obviously. Believe in everything you're talking about and I actually have no problem with the incentives, I think they're great. Um I love the idea of somehow incentivizing um the ability to have some fair better fair market rate and control rents a little bit. My concern is. This. Zone, the ED zone. Was originally exclusively commercial. And it wasn't that long ago that it was converted to economic development. And it was done so to incentivize, allow developers to add residential, which is what everybody, all the developers wanna do. They just wanna do residential, nobody wants to buy and do commercial because retail is dead mostly, um so you can have industrial, you can have residential. So this area was designed to incentivize. The commercial. This. Where it is with this particular rules is saying, we we are going to allow you to do no commercial. In order to incentivize this other thing, I agree it's important and I actually don't disagree, Robert. That this area probably makes sense as a more of an R two apartment style place, I was driving up and down it today, I go by there every single day when I drop my. Kids off at camp at Pine Brook or at school, the high school, every day I drive through there, um. And I agree, I mean, it's basically, once you get past the hospitals, it's basically residential. And then, you know, besides Pub four forty-seven and Terra Greens, it's nothing and then it's residential again, it. Being on a highway or a highway, Independence Road like that, it really makes sense as a potential R two. My challenge is the way we're doing it right now potentially opens up the doors for. Other places in the E ED and I know that there's ways we're trying to write it so it doesn't, but for me, that's the sort of the definition of spot zoning. So I don't like the approach that we're taking to it, I would just assume rezone that area, R two. It is since it is abutting all our ones all around it. And it goes into an ED, it fully makes sense from a zoning perspective. Um and if there's some other way we can incentivize this fifteen percent um through some other mechanisms, I'm all for that. I just, I think the approach that we're taking um feels very spotty.
Well, I I think you could apply the same logic to this that we're applying to the signing, which is maybe we have to do it piecemeal because. It's too big of a job to do it all at once and do it random and I I agree with you, there should be some. Rezoning, but I think it's gonna take a long time and remember. Uh most of, let's let's all talk about Independence Road, most of it is um medical. Um and so how do you rezone medical and you can't make that R two? I mean, maybe we need a new zone that we don't know yet, but these things take a lot of time and I think in the meantime, people need someplace to live. I would say this is a good interim fix, but I agree, it's not the not the ultimate fix, but the ultimate fix. It's gonna take a long time, I remember when we when we um. Um. When we created the ED zone and there was nothing like this around, um took us about. Year, year and a half, and it was really through research that um one of John's associates, who's known with that firm. Did and and she wrote most of it um and guided us through it, takes a long time. And with what we're talking about, it's probably a new zone, but it's gonna take a long time to do that, but I agree with you, that's the ultimate. Solution here.
I mean, I I'll just make a counter argument, opposed to implementing something like this, I would love to see. Whether there's, we believe, the engineer believes that this strip as R two. Makes it makes, you know, is that feasible, if that's pop zoning, it's multiple properties. Um. I'm just, do you even?
Well, the problem with changing it to R two, then. Then every developer would have to provide this in the R two district, wherever it is, would have to provide this incentive.
No, no, I'm separate, I'm saying that area makes sense as. A place for apartment buildings.
Okay.
And then if you wanna add some incentive, I don't actually, I mean, I don't know, know enough about R two, could we, there's basically.
I mean, if you wanna tailor your zoning criteria more specifically to this, you could create an R three district. And then you would have the specific criteria for building in the R three district.
I mean, one of the things that ED did was it un- unfortunately, in some ways, it got rid of the B one, B two.
So it's no longer transition.
Which was sort of like. Allowed you to transition from commercial to residential.
And and the R three would allow, would permit that because it's gonna be a higher density.
This is gonna be my question because R two is probably not the density that that this would really want to be. I I don't know what the height limit is off the top of my head in R two, but I would say it's probably not more than.
Well, may, well, maybe that's it, then maybe it's an R, still an R two, but you provide an incentive that allows you to do these other things if you meet these criteria.
R two doesn't allow the.
R two doesn't allow the density.
No, but I'm saying, so there's where your incentive is. I I don't like the idea of saying in the ED zone, which we created specifically to incentivize commercial um development, to have zero commercial on that. It doesn't, for me, it's just, it's counterintuitive to the whole reason why the the zone was launched. That's that's my fundamental flaw with this.
Yes, my only counter question, I have no dog in this, but the fact is, is do you like all the other parts of the ED zone for this particular type of use? Because if all the other parts that make sense, it'd be kind of redundant to have to duplicate everything that's an ED. And then also have this little small little provision versus this, it's not uncommon to do this type of thing for like, if the plot is over five acres, this kind of rule will be in place. This is called, we don't really wanna do that because that would open up all the two oh nine corridors.
Yeah, we, I I don't think there's a desire to have no commercial. Then everyone's taxes.
My hope for this property was that, since it got the variances that it did, because we're mostly talking about the four forty seven area, that topographically, it's challenged, the parking, you know, we wanna reduce parking anyway. We want less asphalt taking up green space. But, you know, I wonder, does it make more sense to have an incentive in R two or do R three? Because I think, I love what the ED zone has done. I mean, you look at what's happening on on two oh nine business now. It's working. The animal hospital has multifamily, they have the apartments. You have other proposals that are proposing self-storage and housing the same type of building. I don't think, I don't think that any other commercial use finds this attractive. So it might be better to fit it into residential than commercial, is what, you know.
Well, let's remember that if we if we made it part of a three oh eight incentivized, um, the developer can still build a commercial. So this is just um another possibility.
But this one is not going to.
Well, because there's.
CBS said no, other places.
This thi- this particular developer we're talking about has found that um you just can't find an anchor tenant to that area.
But I mean, the reality is, I I think, and I I don't, is there any residences or anyone here that lives on that? Oh, um, I would imagine that the R one residents behind here probably would like an apartment building more than they'd like a gas station or a C V S right in their backyard. I I mean, I wanna put words in anyone's mouth. That's what I'm assuming we would do. So I genuinely uh generally think this particular stretch, which does abut on behind it, R one and abuts R one in, I guess that's East Straussburg it goes into. Um, I think that area makes sense. I think it makes sense for an R two zone. I just do not. I I'm worried about doing, if it's this and this and this and this in the E two, in in the ED, then you can do this. It seems like, it just feels wrong to me.
Well, my thought is, since tonight we can't, not gonna change it in any direction anyway, can we get a draft potentially, John, for the next meeting of what it would look like if it were R two? Maybe we have to look at the specific parcels that are around.
Rather than R two, why not go for a new zone called R three? That's what Joe.
I mean, talk about time.
Takes a lot of time.
Yeah, changing the map can be, you know, ninety days, but changing the.
Then we're changing, changing all of the medical facilities.
No, I just, I was talking about that, that from, from uh all the plots that are across from Pub four forty seven.
They're unimproved, the ones that you're talking.
They're all unimproved.
So, well, so you're saying, um, what, we've got Pub four forty seven?
That's what I meant, so across the street.
Okay, so there's just one big parcel.
Is it just one? I thought there was multiple.
No, I think it's one big parcel.
Oh, then that can be, that would be spot zoning.
The other um advantage of that particular parcel is we're planning on moving um um the entrance to um Franklinville Road.
I know, and that's.
Sign. That's um part of the development here because the developer has to give us that land so that we can change the direction of the road, so it lights up. All this, I think we fly for a multimodal brand. All this comes together. It's 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 more complicated than we're getting into it.
Yeah. I would just like to explore the idea of not piecemealing something for one piece of property in the ED zone. That's that's why.
And whether we could do that without spot zoning.
Correct. Well, I, and I feel like this sort of is spot zoning, just working around it. Um, unless we're making it a little bit larger of a space. But again, I agree. I think it makes sense to have apartments along the Independence Road.
Well, I think there's a couple. I mean, I can't zoom in all the way on my phone, but looks like there's maybe four or five parcels along there. So it's not just one, just one is bad.
Do some analysis.
We do that for September ninth, next meeting. At least the rough, well, use us however you need, but, you know.
Not his priority. Here's a question.
Tammy.
I understand the answer from the gentleman talking in the audience. It's really true. Monroe County, Transylvania, Smithfield, you're trying to help them, am I right? Well, I remember another meeting, you cannot control who the builder sells these to.
Correct.
So they could sell them to other residents that are not from this area. Is it really helping this area? Or is it building it up for other things? So that is my concern.
Sure. And and it's ours too. So I think that there's a little bit more research that that we can do into it, but I, obviously, it's difficult with restricting who can live anywhere, but that's kind of why you you kind of build that into your ordinance and what type of structure to be built. There's natural limitations based on how many bedrooms and different things like that. What is fifty five in a?
Helping the township?
What's that?
Is it helping the township or Monroe County with this problem of of the ratting and everything? Or is it letting in other people taking advantage of us? That's what I'm concerned about.
I think without, I mean, there's plenty of evidence and data showing that there's a need for more affordable housing, which if there's been smaller housing.
Builder controls.
Oh, correct.
That's my point.
But if it's an R two zone, you that, then you are, you are building an apartment. I mean, that's the idea. You can't build a single tenant home. Right?
So it takes up less green space too, because we don't want the residential zones to be built at. R twos are usually adjacent to economic development, so they're less likely to receive the type of particular traffic and, you know, all that negative effects. So we're gonna do more research, but nothing's final.
I wanted to emphasize my concern.
Thank you. Sam?
Um, so. All right, I'm sure the United Way is familiar with Mountain Manor. They offer affordable housing within those price ranges that you spoke of. There's a lot of them there, actually, seventy six units now. Now, also, there's another forty five units that the township engineer has also approved. The plans have been submitted, everyone's been submitted, but Robert over here is stalling, is stalling the process and the permitting process of getting this done. There's forty five units that are ready to be, ready to be within six months occupiable. But it's installed because someone's throwing a temper tantrum over the motocross track. Robert specifically, when he trespass and threw our stuff on the ground, he has specifically said, Michael has a lot of irons in the fire right now to ruin this and throw it into the township. So there's forty five units that are ready for this affordable thing that that are already here. Everything's already here. Forty five units that are here and affordable between a thousand and twelve hundred dollars a month, already here. But just got your head up your ass here, and here you are again. We gotta find affordable houses. I wonder where it is. We're gonna look over here at Mountain Manor. Oh my gosh, look at this. This is affordable thing from this. It's guys as it's affordable housing. But it's not. It's it's guys as affordable housing, yet who's gonna make a profit? The builder coming in is making a profit. It's not good for the area. The builder's making a profit. You guys are getting something out of it. So there's forty five units that are waiting for your approval, but you guys are just holding up the permits like you do everything else. So just keep that in mind. There's forty five units already here for the affordable housing thing, if you just open your eyes. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
No, here. Thank you, Dapper.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next, the consideration to award the bid for the post office bridge repair. John, I understand we got one proposal.
We got one. That was in spite of me personally calling three other contractors who know are qualified and basically sent their visits. Uh, yeah. We got one bid from Bi-State Contractors. I've worked with them in the past. They are a known bridge engineer. They are good. Uh, their price came in at two hundred and forty six thousand, four hundred and seventy five dollars. The this project is a specialty project, so it's not like you can just check a bunch of other projects to see whether the pricing is in line. My feeling is that price is a little high, but that's a subjective feeling. I look for, I look for cost comparisons and prior to tonight, and I really couldn't come up with anything. Right, I know we're under the gun. Um, Pendot has closed it. We have a resident who can't access her property. So that's, that's all has to be taken into consideration. I would think if we were to rebid it and aggressively pursue more contractors, we might be able to bring that price down somewhat, but it might push us all the way into next year before we can actually build on the ordinance.
Does this, this doesn't go on the coast stars, right?
No.
Cause it's a, it's a professional.
Right, this was a bit through Penn Bay.
It was a bit through Penn Bay.
Yes.
Yeah. This, this is all covered by a grant.
No, no, it isn't. No, this is the bridge that's down.
This is the post office bridge. It's different than the Green Mountain Drive.
Which I had thought we had another.
We.
We gotta eat this one.
If it goes into next year, we can certainly buy for one or see what options are there, but.
I guess the question is.
Are they likely to bid again, this this company, at least if we were to do it again?
I'm not again.
I guess the question is, what is the, I mean, the resident doesn't live there. Is that correct? It's a resident, but they're not.
Secondary residence.
I mean, I just, I just, that's a ton of money.
It's two, two residents.
We don't even walk the bridge. Um, but we're legally obligated to ensure they have access. Um, I don't know, I don't.
I mean, my, I I think it's a question of what you do about the residents. My my engineering recommendation, setting that part aside, would be to rebid, contract some contractors. One contractor offered during the bidding process to go out and look at it and maybe come up with some different ideas. And I think, you know, the bidding process doesn't allow that. If we were to reject the bid, well, then we could do that, see if we had some ideas that might save some money. We could also pursue some other contractors more aggressively. Um, some of the work can be done uh in spite of the weather. Putting the bulk in and shoring up this bamboo walls, that is not weather dependent. I do believe repairing the underneath, the shot creep is weather dependent because you have to keep it above a freezing temperature.
I mean, I would entertain a motion to reject this bid and rebid the project.
So, I'll make the motion.
I was still loving that.
Well, second, but I wanted to talk more.
Go ahead.
Um, I want, Ron, I wanna understand what our legal obligation is in rejecting it and ensuring that this resident had access to their property. Is there anything else we can do? Can we have a negotiation? I mean, what is our requirement?
Well, your requirement would be to do your best to see if that resident can get access to the property.
There's no access from the back, right?
Uh, it fronts a river.
Okay, that's like. The project, that's the project, right? But what about the other side? Is it all the way around?
Around the hill.
So, um, there's a river right here. If the property is right here, there's then steep slopes on this side.
Steep slope, on the other side, steep slope would be two oh nine, right? And he's basically going, going up towards.
You might be able to reach gap view depending on how you.
Yeah, okay. There's no other road, though.
That's correct. It would be a mile or more of road that we would need to create.
And I would tell you that if, in fact, now, if we're going to rebid to see if another bidder might come in with a more sharpened temple, that certainly makes sense. And you're just spending township money to do this, or taxpayer money to do this. So if you wanna rebid, you can. It's been hanging around this long already. Is it gonna create an issue with that back for the resident? Uh, you know, no, but no, no problem with you rebidding. You mean the tax or rebidding, if you're going to see it, you will see some more people coming in that have a better number.
Are there emergency funds at the state to help cover something like this?
There could be some.
I mean, I'm all for rebidding if it means that, hey, we can also simultaneously try to find some state funding, so it's not a Smithfield Township tax base that has to foot this bill.
Yeah. I I would think, based on what we've seen with some developers, perhaps there might be funding.
Multimodal, I don't know. I mean, it's a road, so it's an improvement.
Pursuing a multimodal grant will set the project back a minimum of another year, though, because we'll have to apply for that. Go through the grant, prove the process.
It's not twenty, twenty twenty six then?
I believe it. Even if we did that, though, we're looking at construction. If you accept this bid, easily being complete by October of twenty twenty five. Should we rebid that, depending on the weather, can make it pushed into twenty twenty six? If we go after a multimodal grant and are awarded it, which unfortunately is not guaranteed, uh, we're looking at construction beginning for the project, probably earliest would be September of twenty twenty.
I'm assuming, by the way, that the bridge is carrying a township road as opposed to a state road, correct?
Sucks.
Any other comment?
So, um, what possible for that you're talking about, isn't that a private road, a private bridge?
No, it's a public road, public bridge.
But it's the road that just goes for one house, right?
Yes, but it's a.
There's actually, and there's actually multiple properties on that.
One is semi-occupied.
Okay, the last time at one of the meetings, it was parked there, it was a private road that led to that.
No, they, there was a time when someone that did occupy one of the properties wanted it to become that. So there were repairs that were necessary anyway before they would accept dedication, before we could vacate the road to them. Um, this is just a expanded version of that, just passage of time.
I will, I'll say, uh, I believe personally that the bid is a fair price. Um, if you research their work, they've been in business over sixty years. I personally know the algorithm company. Um, they do not do shot work. They do tons of work for the state.
Sure.
So, I mean, what you get from them, good equality work. If we rebid it, the seller to save forty grand, where are they gonna cut corners to save forty grand?
Fair enough. I think we're willing to see, and I I would, I would bet that they would probably, based on John's advice, would probably be willing to bid again. And if that's the result, then I think that's what we have, but this would give us a little bit more time to secure additional funds.
Man, that that's what I wanna say. If if, I I I agree with the sentiment. If delaying means that there's a chance we can get funds, I'm for it. But also, I wanna understand legal risk. If we delay, is there a risk that this owner will say, you're required by law to maintain the road that goes to my property and I'm going to sue you? And it's worth more than the difference? Then I'd say, let's just go with this bid.
To answer the first part of your question, um, after we received word from Pendot that they were going to close the bridge and we had seven days to close it, I did do research to try and find if there was an emergency grant.
Right.
Because it wasn't associated with a, like, pima-grade emergency, I was not able to find anything. I can absolutely look again. John, I'm sure you can look too, but I was unsuccessful.
I'm not thinking about an emergency. I'm thinking about a multimodal or a, or you know, something a little bit more streamlined through a process, which of course would take another year. I I think that's just the question. Is this, is the owner gonna say? Screw you.
Obviously, the owner can say that that's not fast enough for him. Obviously, the owner can say that that's not fast enough for him or her and. Bring an action, we can't prevent that from occurring, the best we can do is. Based upon the facts and circumstances are in front of us. Uh, and based upon the information that we have been given. We're making our best reasoning judgment as to how to. I, I. Shoves that up our tail later and say, you shouldn't have done it that way, so be it, but. The other, the other thing we could do if. Reject the bin. As I could attempt to get Penda to meet with me out there on site, it was Penda who recommended. This repair.
Right.
Because they had done it on a similar bridge elsewhere.
Right.
Uh. The question is. This bridge has no traffic on it. And does it need to be repaired to this? Level, I mean, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta put the bolts in. And we gotta put. The channels in to tie the two spamber walls. Together, but that's not what's driving the cost.
Now, what's running the cost is the shock.
The shock creek, each barrel. And if there's something that we can do that can bring that cost down somewhat.
Well, what is the, the tonnage load? They are looking at versus the maximum realistically, which would be a fire truck.
And that's, bridge loading is complicated, it's based on ADT. This falls below any one of their design standards, because. You got one person that goes there, a garbage truck goes across maybe. Once or twice a month. Or well, no, every week, but. She's not even there, a lot of woods.
Yeah, the army builds temporary bridges that they run tanks across, which are seventy tons. Or is there any way we can do temporary, probably more than this?
I mean, look at, we, we have, we have seven line items here, is mobilization. Is eleven thousand dollars, that's, that's not out of line. Is E N S twenty-two thousand, that's not out of line because we have to do copper dams, we gotta divert the stream on either side. To do the work underneath. He's only charging, when I said we're going to tie the two spandrels together. Thirty-five thousand, I don't think that's exorbitant. Uh, filling the voids. Sixteen thousand. Then you hit the shock creek, that's a hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that's the big number.
Two barrels times two hundred and twenty-five.
Uh, yeah, that's, and then.
I don't know what shock creek is, so.
Well, shock creek, I, I checked the square yard price of shock creek and his square yard price. Is high compared to what you will find in normal application, but this isn't a normal application. It's underneath an arch over top of the stream, so. That's the complication. All his other, all his other numbers are in line.
Right.
And I'm not saying a shock creek is out of line, I'm just saying, I'm not familiar with it. And I do agree, By State is. A good. A good company to work with. I'm not trying to talk you out of one thing or the other, I'm just making sure you have all the facts.
I don't know how litigious the owner is, that's honestly.
Well, it's not been thus far.
We have regularly been communicating with her lawyer on this though, um, one of the. Owners' main concerns is that winter is coming and the house is heated with heating oil. Um, so one of the concerns that they raised during the bidding process was, would a. Fully loaded truck be able to cross the bridge?
Not now.
In the usual.
Oil grade, I don't know. Um, well, when is this supposed to, is there a deadline, is there a timeframe that goes with this bid?
Uh, yeah, we've got, we, we can put it off, we can, you don't have to award it tonight.
No, well, that's one question, the next question was.
Wondering if we maybe.
What, if, if we bid it, if we had selected this, when is the job gonna be completed, will the job be complete?
The N T P would have been issued approximately within one week, the contractor would have sixty days to complete the project. Um, which feasibly would put completion, uh, September. October. Beginning of November.
Now, we, we can, if, if you're looking for a reason, we can extend the awards. With the decision to make an award. We can also extend the contract time too, but I'm not sure what that gets us, but it could be.
We have a, we already have a motion on the table, right?
Yeah, the motion is to reject it, rebid.
Uh, I mean, I'm inclined to, you have to vote on that, but I'm inclined to, uh. To table it, if we have the ability to do that, I, I'd love for you to do a little bit, even if it's not a bid, to understand that this is really. This is not inflated, it's gotta be, we know it has to be done, right?
Let me, I think maybe what I should do is make it by state. Uh. And clarify their bid. We have every right to do that. And then I can report back at the next meeting for sure.
So Robert, I'll just ask you to withdraw your prior motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting.
I'll motion to table this until the next meeting when we have more information from. Engineer.
Mister Levin, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next we go to the consideration of the estate advances, should I just sewage planning module? We do have, uh. Memo from Hanover, we've got, we've got a recommendation of the planning commission. And I think I can spare you. Most of the, uh. Most of that, I think Hanover would just wanted that to be, uh, subject to. Engineers letter. So. I'll let you give it a priority distribution.
Very great, so we're here representing the Shikitas estate, Alsoletic this year, uh, representing the state. Um, this is a proposed subdivision on Franklin Hill Road, this is Hidden Valley Drive, a private driveway. Uh, we're proposing, there are two houses on this property now, seventeen acres. We're proposing to create a lot for each of those existing houses. And create a new building lot, um, out on Franklin Hill Road. So as far as the sewage goes, it is on lots sewage, there's been a replacement area tested for each of the existing homes in a primary. And replacement area tested for the proposed. So. Needs the requirements for sewage planning, uh, with the approval from the township. Uh, this would go onto T P for their approval.
If this, Mister Chair, would you get the planning module or the minor subdivision of both?
Well, we have both in front of us, so. Planning module, I think.
So it's a combined.
Well, I have them as two separate considerations.
Two separate, yeah, two separate actions. I only ask that because I want to review the agreement for conditional approval form. On the subsection E, if we're there, if we're not there yet, then we won't, we'll do that all.
I'll be there in a second, I mean, there, there was no. Issue, at least, uh. On the sewage planning module from Hanover.
Yeah, to be clear, the Hanover Engineering Letter dated July seventh represents the approval of sending the S P M to D E P. The planning commission voted on August fourth, thanks to also recommend sending this to B E P. Uh, Hanover Engineering is the township, let's say S E O, and if I'm no issues with this, so the S P M can be submitted to D E P. And then when we get to the minor subdivision, you would. Upon any other conditions, also approve it, pending approval from D E P for the S P M.
What, uh, okay. What is the D piece, what is D P specifically approving? Is the.
Just the sewage, just a sewage system.
Lots.
Correct.
For the, for the subdivision. Create the three lots, uh, through these existing houses, one of the new building.
So I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um. Uh, to send this to D P?
Yes.
To, to approve it and recommend, uh, right?
Just, just send it to D P. It generates their review, they don't do that until we.
Alright, and then do we have to look at it again to approve it once D P, once they have, now?
No, we're.
Recommend approval with and sending it to, to D E P.
I'll second that.
Mr. Levin, second proposal for the questions. Right. What about sidewalks? That's in the, we'll talk about that in a second, that's under the subdivision.
Next, next.
So this is just the second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Christine, it's a subdivision, just to be clear, I'm gonna read the two things here from the planning commission, their letter of August twenty-second. Which recommended. Uh, to grant the waivers from section twenty-two down. Uh, thousand twelve down twelve and section twenty-two. One thousand eight point three, with the condition that the maximum shared driveway is not exceeding one hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line of Franklin Hill Road. Subsequently, there's also. Recommendation to prove, recommend approval. Um, based upon compliance with the tangible engineers review letter, the time it was January sixth, twenty twenty-five, the current review letter is dated J, July twenty-second. Twenty twenty-five.
Is there any other thing? Well, which one, is there any other, uh, I'll motion to approve, so we can talk about it.
I should, Mr. Levin.
So now, um, John, is there anything? Have you got a new letter? Now, Dave Planning has reviewed it, is that right?
Yep. July is the letter.
July twenty-second, yeah. So is there anything new here that the planning commission hasn't seen, and do we have to go back to planning commission?
No, you don't have to go back to planning commission.
Correct.
I, I would like to review the conditional approval form of the mission of board.
Sure, just, can I, can I have, I want, I want John to explain through the, his comments.
Okay, then there's, on page two of my review letter. There's, uh, two things to be considered, the plan proposes an eight and a half foot widening easement. To create a half width driveway of point five feet along Franklin Hill Road, and that easement will be dedicated to the townships. Uh, a waiver from section. One thousand eight point three is requested so that. They don't have to physically widen the road in that area. Well, that's one waiver to be considered. The other waiver is from section ten twelve point one two. To permit a shared driveway to take access from Franklin Hill Road. Um, the ordinance requires that. A new lot take access from. Uh, the lower, the road of lower classification. Uh, this would be, in this case, Hidden Valley Drive. This was discussed pretty extensively at the planning commission, and the planning commission felt that. Uh. Having one more drive. One more, uh, car coming out on. The existing driveway would be more beneficial than creating a new road cut. On Hidden Valley Drive, so. That's why they recommended that waiver.
Okay, perfect, uh, Ron.
A five hundred dollar fee, that's the third one, right?
Right.
Ron, do you want me to? Uh, have the vote on the two waivers and then renew the conditional approval form, where do you prefer to do that?
Let's do the waivers first, so that we know they're not common first.
Oh, do this on the waivers, and then, then conditional approval form then. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on, uh. The waiver request for section twenty-two. Ten twelve dot twelve. Do I hear that move?
That was approved.
Motion by Mister Levinheim, all second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. waiver number two. Considerations of chapter twenty-two. Section, uh. Thousand eight dot three. And that includes the. Condition on the shared driveway line. Do I hear that motion?
Will you approve?
Second, that motion by Mister Levinheim.
Second, I'll second.
Second, Fisher Alber, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Ron, go through the conditional approval form.
I'm going to go through the form, John, you tell me what other items might need to be checked off, if any. First one, we have the planning module approval and our exemption, so that has to be done, that's still pending, so I've got a note to be done on that. Uh, do we need any certification from the sewer authority or other authority for availability to hook up?
No.
Any certification for product creek authority or other authority to hook up?
No.
Monroe County Planning Commission review.
We have that.
That's been done. Uh, do we need Monroe County Conservation District for view?
No.
We need a soil erosion or sedimentation fund or other type of stormwater plans.
That, that was included in the development plan.
So.
So that is to be done?
That is done.
It is done, okay, it would be done for the. If, if there's a house to be built, it would be done at that time.
Penn Dot highway permit or township driveway permit? Uh, there's an existing driveway there with adequate site distance.
Yeah, they're gonna use the existing driveway, so I'd say it's not applicable.
So that's not applicable, okay. Uh, any other permits like M P D E S or those kind of permits?
No.
All right, I have compliance to set forth with your engineer review letter. Of July twenty-two. Yeah, twenty, uh, twenty-five. We need any deed of dedication for any streets or grants of right of way?
Uh, we will, if. Uh, well, the township just did approve the, um. One waiver, so we do need a deed of dedication for eight and a half feet.
All right, and so that would be, uh, along what, what road?
Along Franklin Hill Road.
And that's for, uh, grant of easement or right of way?
For granted right of way.
With eight and a half feet, yes, okay. Uh, do we need any miscellaneous agreement, for example, for the shared driveway, should there be an agreement? Uh, between the property owners as to the repair, maintenance and or replacement of the driveway? We did agree that we provided shared, uh, driveway agreement for the shared driveway between the, um. Lot number two and lot number three, that hundred and twenty-five feet portion of the existing driveway will be shared. We will create a shared driveway agreement between those. Alright, so that is to be done then?
That's correct.
Alright, because I'm gonna then have you review this and. Make sure you're comfortable with it, and I'm gonna ask you to sign it. And so that we're very clear. Moving forward as to what were the things that had to be done for this plan. Alright, do we need any improvements agreement?
Did you set all your monuments out there?
Yes, we've done that and provided certifications, there's no, no required, who needs remain.
I don't think there is a need for improvements agreement.
Okay. Uh, and no maintenance agreement?
Uh.
And then I have monuments, pins and markers, if you set it in the field, but you said that's been done already. Alright, are we doing park recreation open space fees for this? Uh, so how many lots?
Well, they, the response for five, a five hundred dollar fee in lieu. Which is. For one, one new single family dwelling, earns us five hundred dollars. And check that off. Alright, so all the waivers to be noted on the plan. Plan to be signed and plan to be notarized. They, you could come here and look at this, please, make sure it meets with your approval, I'm gonna ask you to sign it. Right?
Just to be clear to everybody, the motion, the underlying motion is on the conditional approval of this, which are subjective conditions listed.
Pretty decent.
The aforementioned, uh.
You won't section that with your, yes, fine.
There's nothing fancy there, but I require it to be in writing, I don't want to be gentle later about what we've raised, the conditions that you listed.
No, we ended on on this. There, right?
No.
I've walked the road. Right? Yeah, I mean. That'll come up. Reveal in the.
This, this one.
It's a lot, I got you, okay.
So I have in front of me, Mister Chair, the agreement for conditional approval. In which the conditions that were recited, uh, have been. And signed by the applicant. And this matter is ready for vote. Or further discussion.
A motion to approve with the conditions. Listed.
Second. Motion, Mister Alber, second. Levinheim, discussion. Anyone?
Well, I, I have a quick question. And, um. Private driveway, we're looking to put. One or two more homes in there, trying to have a shared agreement. Is the driveway large enough to support two-way traffic? That down the road from today. There's not a huge flight back there that the state police are coming to all the time, or the township has to get involved because. They agreed to. Agree to share driveway, and now we have. Between applicant A and the rest of the people, that there's an argument, I can't get in and out of my house.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, the part that's shared, so the one new lot is located right here. This is the driveway that goes back to the existing home, there's a hundred and twenty-five foot section in the front that'll be shared, the rest of it is, we're named private. And there will be an agreement between those users to, um.
I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of double advocate.
Yeah.
We're, you're okay with it, they're okay with it. Except for now. They can't get in and out of their driveway.
Is that a deed, is it, are those agreements usually needed? They're usually recorded into Corvales at the reporter deeds office, so that if in fact there's an issue. They can go back and say, I have a reported easement. Uh, or reported driveway agreement. Uh, that protects me, so. Can we make the conditional such a. Uh, agreement is, is, it would be recorded?
Yes, we, that was our intention.
I know, I know you were doing it, but it makes valid point.
I know you were doing it, but it makes valid point that if you sold and. Two people decided to fight over it, it'd be an issue down the line.
You'd like to amend your motion?
I'll make comment my emotion to add the condition that. Um, the hundred and twenty five? Foot?
Should be the shared, uh.
Shared portion of Franklin, of Hidden Valley Drive.
No, no, it's not hidden valley between the proposed shared driveway between lot two and lot three. Approximately a hundred twenty five feet long. And we'll have a shared. Use agreement that will be recorded in the courthouse.
What you said.
Writing that on the form again and I want to repeat it so that you. You can hear it.
All right.
Alice, would you initial that, please?
I I amended my emotion, maybe a second.
I was gonna ask, cause I, now you're good, you're good.
I have here that the shared driveway agreement between lot two. Two lot three at one hundred and twenty five feet long will be recorded.
That's fine.
Not okay? And then you're gonna copy, you and your attorney will get a copy of her. Engineer will get a copy of this. To be done and then if it's been done already in some fashion, then it's taken care of. So we want to make sure it's taken care of, so thank you for your. Thank you, sir, as always.
Thank you.
Any last comments?
Well, we have to vote.
Yeah. All in favor? Okay.
Okay.
Next is the consideration of the Monica Minor subdivision, we have a letter, um. From the planning commission on that as well, which recommended, uh, which was from your August fourteenth meeting, which recommended the approval of Monica Minor subdivision. Subject to satisfaction of the township engineers review letter of August thirteenth. Since then, uh, the engineers released the letter dated August twenty fifth. And they voted to recommend. All waivers as set forth in the attached waiver request letter from Brian D. Cartwright, PLF dated July fifth. Twenty twenty five. Okay. Present, uh, I think.
Uh. I think it's pretty much done, uh, John, you want to go over what what's left? Well, sure, uh, the project is subdividing. Uh, a very large parcel into two pieces, uh. Lot number one. Which is the smaller of the two pieces is seventeen acres and change. The remaining parcel, I can't read your number there, new hundred seventy nine?
One ninety six, I told you, one ninety six less.
Total, yeah, so one hundred and seventy nine acres remain. So it's a very large subdividing in. And a half.
Yeah.
Although the halves aren't equal.
Yeah, right.
There are a couple waivers that were requested and recommended by the planning commission. Uh, one was a waiver from having to provide a survey of the entire property, we didn't think that was necessary. Uh, a waiver from providing a title report. Uh, it's been owned forever by the same person, there's no instruction contemplated, so there was nothing that's gonna show up in a title report that would be. Problematic. Uh. The ordinance does suggest that they locate. Existing wells and on lot septic systems on adjacent properties. There's no development proposed on this. Probably nothing within hundred feet anyway, but, uh. So that was waived. And that's it, those three waivers and there's nothing else that needs to be done.
Just curious, will the. Lines? Where the subdivision is on this map?
Yes, you initially, initially, we were going to attach it to this piece, we decided not to.
Okay.
So.
So, but we're, this is the plot or this is the plot?
This is the plot, this is the overall and that little piece there.
Here.
It's just like.
But it's not making anything unaccessible because this.
Right.
Part is accessed by, so already there's a private road which is called, which is, all right.
It's a good court.
It's a good court that can access this property.
Yes.
Oh, I got you, I was I was reversed there, got you, yep. So all this land is the remaining piece, this is the new one.
Yep.
And then, sorry, the size, then the lot one is. That's also huge, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is a simple plan, but I'd like to review the form again.
Give Robert a second, but yeah, well, um, I'll do the three waivers first and then we'll go through the form.
Oh, well. Let's go for form, yeah, Robert needs to be here to go to the waivers.
Right, okay.
Right, doesn't he?
Yes. I mean, there'll be a second, but it's fine, go ahead, go through it. Make it simpler.
All right, John, again, any planning module approval or exemption for this plan? Any certification from any sewer authority or hookup? Certification from any water authority for hookups? The planning commission review. Monroe County planning. Yes, Monroe County Conservation District review, not necessary, any soil erosion or sedimentation plant or other stormwater plant.
No, not necessary.
Any Pendot highway permit or driveway surgery or township driveway permit?
Not necessary.
Any other permits like MPDES?
Not necessary.
All right, so we have compliance with. Uh, conditions set in your letter of.
Yeah, all, all, all comments, I would, I would always make a condition with all comments, that's that's fine.
All right, well, let's put it on just to be safe. August twenty five?
Yes.
All right, do we need any dedication for any streets?
No.
Any unification or merger deeds?
No.
Any grant of easements for rights of way along any roadway?
No.
Any miscellaneous agreements?
No.
Any improvements agreement?
You've got all your monuments done?
No, I got a quick question on that. This is a private road.
Yep.
Does the new lot? Will then be share, shared access or is, uh? Would it be accessed by Remington Road?
No, it'd be come off, come off of Ithaca.
Ithaca, and Ithaca's not private.
Well, I think, I think it is, I think. This, this road here was, was done because the, uh. East Stroudsburg, uh, borough. One of that piece, I'm not even sure.
Uh, yeah, the same question we have for these guys, which is. If you decide you want to sell this land and it's only accessible by this private drive that is owned by you.
Well, he's got fronties on it, he has rights.
Well, it's private drive, it has to be needed, right, right? It has to be in the.
Currently is owned by. You follow the footing.
Correct. Um, if it's subdivided, it's the ability to sell it, but how, where does the road fall on that and that?
Well, but the access will be from that road.
Okay, so I guess I'm just saying, there probably should be a condition that states that similarly, the portion of Ithaca road that is private. At the very end. Um, that there be needed access in the event that it's be sold, correct?
Well, the.
I I don't know.
Ithaca Drive currently prior to this subdivision is wholly within this piece of property.
Right.
So now he's selling off.
Well, not selling, subdividing, but he might sell.
Well, I'll assume he's selling, he's selling half off, but the half, each half. As a result of the subdivision, still has frontage on that road, Ithaca Drive.
Okay. The, so they would have to share, uh, maintenance?
Uh, I guess if nobody's maintaining it, uh.
It's funny still.
Oh, that road doesn't exist?
No, it's a paper street, yeah, like I said, they did it to access this.
Well, it's still gravel road, I mean, I have a gravel driveway, I have to maintain it with my neighbor because we share it, I just.
Yeah, honestly, right now, they're not even contemplating doing anything.
Yeah, I understand. Thinking about the.
Event, eventually, whoever wants to improve either this lot or this lot is gonna have to, gonna have to build it.
I guess that would happen in management then anyway, or?
Well, it's a building, they could, somebody could theoretically want to build a house on lot number one.
Right.
And just get a building permit. I believe he has access off of Ithaca Drive, even if it's only here at the property line. To your point, there could be an argument over maintenance beyond that point.
I don't know if there's any.
We can add a hope to the bottom of the plan, I gotta add the waivers to it anyway.
Does a note work on the plan?
If it, if it's clear. Yeah.
Okay.
So what, what is the note going to say? It's gonna say, uh. Uh, construction maintenance of the proposed of of.
Ithaca Court.
Ithaca Court will be, uh, responsibility of those. Who, um.
I think it just has to be in the event that, uh, that either of these lands are. Um, owned by different people, there needs to be some sort of. Share maintenance agreement between parties. Right? Something like that. So I don't care what exactly.
Why, why, why don't you propose some language? That it has to be approved by the township engineer and solicitor.
Perfect, works for me. And that would be what the Ithaca. Sorry, I just complicated it. Only Ithaca. I know, but it's, it it may, it matters. Well, not today, but maybe in thirty years. A. Shared agreement or something?
With a shared driveway agreement to be reviewed by the township. Shared, shared road agreement.
So it's a private road.
So that mean, that mean if I come in with a fifty lot subdivision, every one of those people on there have to. Provide, you have to provide a shared access?
Well, usually those things are get dedicated. Or they're the responsible.
That's why we want you to submit something.
That's exactly what happened.
All right, so I have that, let's go back to where I left off. Uh, any park recreation open space fees for this property? For this project?
No.
No? Okay. About monuments, pins, markers, sudden to feel and certified and writing?
Up there, all been done.
They've been done, okay. So then I have here in front of me, I'm gonna have the. Playing professional to sign, basically say that the conditions are compliant with the category and here for you better of August twenty five. That the sound of waivers will be granted and marked on the plan. That the Ithaca court access will have a shared road agreement for approval by the engineers, the listener. Plan to be signed and plan to be notarized.
All right, that said, then I'll entertain a motion on waivers, eight oh three dot one dot F, eight oh three dot one dot R, eight oh three dot one dot Y.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bear, second by Mr. Bubbaheim, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Hey, we gotta, that was just the waivers, we gotta prove.
We're gonna say.
This.
In front of me, the agreement for conditional approval.
Form in which the applicant, so. Planning professional has accepted the conditions and that matter is ready for a vote.
I'll entertain that motion.
My, uh, motion to approve with conditions listed.
Second, Levinheim. Last question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing.
That works.
I'll be in touch with you one.
Did you say?
Just trying to make sure I move all the appropriate ones out of the way. Sure. Yeah, no, I know, I just. Don't want to have something else in front of me to dispute. Next, we have the consideration to approve the Smithfield Sewer Authority Land Development Plan. Wants to address that, Russ, Chair Sewer Authority.
Good evening.
Hey, Russ.
Uh, I thought our engineer was gonna be here, but he had a, oh, situation, uh, I think, uh. Everything could be pretty straightforward, so. What he comes up that he needs to answer, you know.
Yeah.
That is wrong.
Through the form. Recommendation there, the planning commission recommended the approval of the waivers at the fourth and waiver quest letter. We had over engineering date of July thirty, twenty twenty five, and they also recommended that plan to be. Uh, approved subjects, the wires previously voted on and the waivers previously voted on and the township engineer review letter. Of August twelfth, twenty twenty five.
August twelfth, I have twenty fifth, I think.
Um. We do have a renewed review letter in, no. July twenty fifth. Did we get one out of August, Paul?
Yeah, a review letter from August twelfth.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just not in the packet.
Not in the packet.
It's all right, uh, we can read it to us.
All I mentioned is less commas to beat. Either which way, do you want me to go through the waivers now? Okay. We have.
Well.
We have twelve and they were unanimously recommended by. Planning commission, any member of the board have any specific discussion on this twelve waivers?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna entertain a motion on all twelve.
Second.
Oh, you have to make the motion, we know, we'll make them.
There's Levinheim. All second.
Can we have a?
Discussion.
Ten seconds on each one?
Yeah.
You hear that, John?
Yeah, I was looking for my current, but I don't think the waivers changed, so we have a waiver. Uh. From section. Ten fourteen point one point eight. Do not put in curb. Along the parking lot, they want to allow the water to flow naturally as it flows now. We did not see a problem with that or did the planning commission? Uh, waivers, big question from section. Uh, ten fifteen point one to not provide sidewalk. Oh, sidewalk in here.
They are offering the easement to the plan.
I'm gonna say to clarify, we are providing an easement, uh, along the property line.
Yeah. I think the way it'll change. Um. A waiver, big question from eleven point, eleven oh one point one point C point two point B. Who permit the required number of street trees to be placed at varied locations as opposed to stacked up along the road? They felt that they could do a nicer, uh, landscape job with that and.
Yeah.
The planning commission agreed. Yeah. Uh, a waiver, big question from section eleven oh one E two to not. Require a low hedge between the parking area and seven bridges roads. Uh, they are gonna provide mountain laurel. Uh, so we questioned whether waivers even require for that, if if we think mountain laurel is pretty much evergreen, so.
Al- also, there is an existing hedge. So pardon the, that justification.
Almost all of the waivers deal with existing features that are.
Yeah. Prosperity, prosperity.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing to keep in the back of your mind after you do the waivers is whether. There's gonna be a requirement for being blue or not, that's a discuss. Let's say a roof. A waiver requested from section thirteen oh two point three point H to permit grading less than two percent along the proposed swell. They're utilizing an existing swell. They also have good stormwater infiltration in that area, so. Uh, we did not see that as a current or, or in the planning commission sees as a problem.
Wow.
Uh, waiver is requested from section thirteen and two point four point A to make grading at a two to one slope between the parking lot and the existing garage. I think that's what exists there now already, I think you said.
Correct.
So there is no problem with that. And, uh. One more comment we have to talk about, which I will bring up later, I get other waivers. A waiver from section two twenty three point one point J. Parentheses, one, parentheses. A, parentheses, two, parentheses, A. Is requested to permit disturbance of the outer westland, wetland buffer. Uh, parking is proposed in the outer wetland buffer three spaces. Uh, and then a waiver from the same section. Uh. That's. For the outer buffer. Then a waiver from. Two twenty three point I point J three A two.
Okay.
Uh. For a disturbance of point one three three acres in the outer screen buffer, which is a result of that parking area. We have duplication within our ordinance. Generating.
Multiple waivers for the same.
Multiple waivers for the same.
Sure.
Yep. Uh.
But just comment on those three waivers, the area in question is all previously deserted. Right. And we're just, what are you parking, we're parking with this, right now, however, it's in the outer buffer.
Waiver from section two twenty five point one point A. Parentheses, three, parentheses. Waiver from section two twenty five point one point A, parentheses, three, parentheses, A. Uh, to not meet twenty four inches to a limiting zone, uh they're using a natural. They've proven that it works, so there's no need to do any further testing, so we. We're okay with that waiver. Uh a waiver from section two twenty eight point three to not require an emergency spillway. And to not provide a one foot free board, again, there you can leave an existing depression as part of their. Stormwater detentions and uh. We don't, and any flooding should have not worked would not. Cause a hazard to anyone or any private property, so we're okay with that waiver. And. That is it for the waivers.
Okay.
Alright, there's two other questions which. There's. Comment on and that one is a fee in blue, whether it's gonna be required or not. The other comment would be. Uh, whether the applicant is going to have to post financial security for any proposed site improvements or not.
I should answer the fee and move uh question.
Sure.
Uh, we have met with Broadhead Watershed Association, as you know, the property of Buss Marshall Street. Uh we've asked them for assistance in developing a riparian forest area along Marshall Street. With a potential access for the public to come down to the creek into maybe a little picnic grove or something. Which would be a public area. Uh and we think that meets the uh the recreation, we being in lieu of recreation, we're providing. Potential public space with the help of Broadhead Watershed.
If, that's all great, if you're unable to do that, is there a. Request fee in the. Number? In the event we can't do it, or is that a pressure of a hundred percent?
I think personally, even if it's not a hundred percent, we can connect through the easement to the walking path that we have already.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the other part of it is we're we are providing a ten foot easement along the front uh property line.
Okay.
For its potential walkway trail, whatever.
That's 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 sufficient in this, I would qualify, I believe also.
Yeah. Alright, so. Any comment on the waivers and then we'll address fees and uh security.
Uh got a question, um township liability, uh have we extended trail? To their recreational area, what's our liability?
As a township?
As a township.
I don't think it's a material change liability from the existing trail.
Since they extended to their property.
Right, well, if they're a public entity, then they're part of us technically, so.
They fall under the township.
I I I I understand that, but. They're all individual entities.
Yeah.
So.
So we're providing the easement to the township.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think it's.
There's no guarantee that we're going to make the improvement though, so we'll address that at that point. Okay, alright, all in favor on the waivers?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, who need a motion, my motion to approve waivers. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Screw up anywhere, this is a long meeting.
You're good.
Alright.
Hi.
Alright.
Okay, on the fees and open uh move open space, I think they've already made a sufficient commitment, so I'll entertain a motion to waive that.
I'll motion to waive the fee in there. Given the. He's been being provided by the. So we're doing.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Mr. Loveenheim, discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Okay, financial security, do you? I don't know, on that one, do you have a justification for why you don't want to post?
Uh we're proposing to do the renovations or the construction um. Through the uh use of sewer authority funds.
Okay, so.
That's for the escrow for the, for the review of the land development, is that what that is? I don't even know.
No, no, that's for the improvements.
Right.
So they guarantee that they put in the improvements that we're.
Oh, they're.
Putting on the plan.
Right.
That you require for every other developer.
Right, the uh the trees and. There's not a lot, there's some trees.
Not a lot, that's correct.
It's an escrow, is that right?
It is.
The dark position on that is that we are providing a service uh to the township residents uh and and they are paying for that as a use fee. They're also uh taxpayers, people who are uh users of the sewer system are taxpayers in the township also. And we, you know, for us to provide additional funding in advance of doing the construction. Uh that would have to come out of use fees, which would impact those.
You can't do a letter of credit?
This is an escrow, right, in case for some reason you decide, I'm not gonna put those trees up that I said I was gonna do. That gives the township the right to put them in ourselves. So it's not extra money, it's just money ahead of, which I think you have, do you not? I mean, it doesn't have to be a lot of money.
Well, all I was gonna ask about, could you do a letter of credit?
We will, we could look into that. Uh we are, we are working on a funding uh program for the improvements or the property.
Because I won't really require, it's a minimal draw on your existing funds, but it just makes sure in the future, you know, if the board would change or something.
Okay, well, if we can make that a condition as far as.
We've done that as an alternative to bonding, and I think this is way too small.
It's hard, you're just talking about two trees, right?
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about the driveway, the parking lot and trees. I'm not denying it, more than a couple dollars, I'm not denying that.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 of course.
You wanna go through the form then?
I do. Get your permission, alright, John, again, do we need any planning module approval or exemption for this? It's already.
Our engineer checked, it's it's in one of your comments previously that the three two that the uh uh uh. Planning module exempt is not required because it's one E D U.
Right.
Uh and it will be connected to the uh authority system.
Right, okay.
That may be false to one or to other P and M's or.
Not, alright, we don't need any certification, obviously, from themselves about their cup. Any certification from this rocky, brought it pre- regional authority for hookup or availability, no. Monroe County Planning Commissioner review. Same comment. Monroe County Conservation Department review, not requiring any soil erosion sedimentation or other stormwater plants. They're they're, they were part of the package, they're, they've been approved. Okay. Uh any Penn dot highway permit or township driveway permit? No, existing driveway. Alright, any other permits like N P V S or general permit for, et cetera, no. Alright, can compliance with the conditions set forth in your review letter, what date are we using? Uh we should be using August.
August twelve, August twelve.
Okay. Alright, do we need any dead, need a dedication for any streets? Uh they're gonna dedicate that easement. Alright, well, I'm putting easement, I have a brand of easement for right of way, right? So, yes. And that's along the twin fault road, yes. Is that along or repairing?
It's a long condemnation line from Penn dot.
Yeah, okay. But Penn dot condemnation. Alright, do we need any unification or murder deeds or anything like that? No. Are we gonna have an improvement agreement, whether with or without security, or we need an improvement agreement? Good, yeah. And with security. By way of a letter of credit, that would per se.
I think that's better than bond, I mean, it's a fairly minimal deal of cost and quantity estimate.
I guess.
We get that done so we can.
Yes.
That easy.
So should improve his agreement with letter of credit then. Yes, okay. Alright, are we gonna need a maintenance agreement? Or any of these improvements gonna be public?
That's a year.
The maintenance of the improvements, they're all gonna be used by the public in a sense, but I don't think. Okay, fair enough. Uh what are we doing now for the park? Face fees, what are we saying that that's gonna be uh?
That easement will fulfill that.
We don't need to worry about that.
Correct.
About monuments, pins or markers, if you set in the field certified and writing, has that been done? I believe it was, I don't have a comment on. Okay. Sound of waivers if they need to be noted on the plan. Plan to be signed, plan to be notarized. Alright, so let me bring this form over here so that you can review it. If it be preferable.
You you read everything that's on it?
I want you to read.
You went through all the things that are on here.
I will then. We recommend the waivers set out at that.
The most on the whole plan.
Or should be aware that this form is a little tedious, but better than going through minutes. Notes, papers, and what did we agree to? I don't remember what was agreed to.
From my understanding, what is the improvement agreement, does that something?
That's an agreement that says you're gonna put in the improvements, whether it be roads, hydrants, whatever.
Okay, not your improvements for your stuff, the the required improvements, the trees.
Shallow on the drawing.
Right, yeah.
They agreed to.
Yeah.
Is that come in a form of an actual document?
Yes, I. I prepared a document, though, I prepared a document based upon a quantity and cost estimate. That's delivered by the township engineer to me.
Okay.
So here are the improvements, this is what I'm gonna call.
And the waivers, uh you're saying.
They noted on the plan.
We, they type those and put them on the.
They don't put them on the plan, they usually get a little sticky.
Yep.
Mylar sticky and they can push it.
So like they already put three approvals from the zoning hearing board on the plan, so it's same type of.
Same thing.
Same deal. They have to be on the plan, so if someone looks at it in the future.
Okay.
They know those waivers are granted. Understood, that looks good.
Yeah.
Ask you to sign it please, and of course you'll get a copy of it.
Where am I finding?
Uh right here.
Will be completed by.
Right there, applicant landowners were authorized agent.
Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the Smithfield Sewer Authority Land Development Plan pursuant to today's August twenty sixth. Uh conditional approval form.
Uh motion to approve.
My Mr. Albert. Second, Mrs. Loveenheim, your last discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Alright, thank you guys. Okay.
Alright.
Two more.
Next, we have uh the Rocco's Collision Land Development Plan. Which I also have some recommendations on. That's. Planning Commission uh meeting of August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the planning commission voting to recommend the approval of the waivers. As set forth in the Undated Waiver Request Table from Island Associates, at the same meeting, they voted to recommend approval. Of the plans subject as the waivers previously voted on, and compliance of the Township Engineers Review Letter of August fourteenth. Twenty twenty five.
Hi, my name's Lori, falling out of my. Uh we represent Rocco's. Collision, they're doing a building addition. Um, they own this building and that building, they combined the lots on a. Probably years ago, a while ago. So they wanna build a building here, it was um a proposed very key.
Can I interrupt you for a moment, can you like move that way and put to. Uh the document like this so people in the audience can see it.
Oh.
Like. We have one in front of us anyway. Just so then that they can see what you're talking about.
Should I start over?
Yeah, start over, cause you just started.
They're just proposing to join the two buildings. The area that is in the middle that they're proposing is for storage and there will be a small office in there. So, that's more or less, they're taking away some of the parking in the front, the parking on the side. I've provided images of the proposed building.
Yeah.
Of the architecture that's proposed for the front of it. Um, right now, this is an existing strip or it was a strip mall, now they use it for their business.
Right.
Um, so that will be garage base in the front.
Oh, are all the, just curious, all the tenants in there would be leaving, or there considered to be tenants in um?
I don't believe there's any tenants there.
Okay.
So I think Rocco's has been.
Rocco leaves, they're building. Okay, is that where the chiropractor was, or is that next door?
Houston.
Okay.
Over there.
I I just know my spot is to get snapped back there, so I don't know, okay. Alright, turn around, alright, thanks.
Alright. I mean, the planning commission recommended all of the waivers, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, eight, nine, ten. You just have a summary on those, I think we can entertain a motion in a moment on all of them.
Hi, do you want me to go over any of the waivers?
I mean, I think.
Waivers, we have some modifications.
Well, you go over the modifications, I I think the waivers here for the most part are just. Their amendments to existing plan, it's a very minimal impact.
Correct, yeah, and then the one modification is instead of having a hedgerow to provide aesthetic landscaping that's gonna complement the architecture of the building. Um and the other one is to, instead of providing sidewalks, we're gonna provide the easement. For a future sidewalks.
Alright, can I entertain a motion of all of the waivers?
I'll make the motions.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim. Second, discussion.
I'd only like.
Now, go ahead, Robert.
Only like you commented that, uh I think uh Rocco's has been a great addition to the township, a good neighbor and a good business, we're glad they come in here.
Oh, well, that's good to hear, I love the passion of it. And as you can see, the architecture of the buildings have.
I was gonna say, we really appreciate that, and that's really kind of what we wanna see more of throughout that corridor. We're going to be in the future, I like that you voluntarily submitted this, cause in the future, everyone's gonna have to, so.
Oh, it helps, helps sell it.
Yeah. Perfect.
The only other items that we have, we addressed all of John's. Comments in his letter, um I will provide that to him, I just wanna make sure there's no other items that we need to change on the plan before we. Submitted to him, but the only other item would be the recreation fee. Um, it's an existing site already developed and we are proposing the easement for the sidewalk.
What what does our ordinance suggest for that, does it suggest anything? When was that passed? I mean, it's it's nice, I guess, but it's.
It it's designed for much larger impacts, I mean, like gateway, for example, they either pay significant fees or dedicate.
Right, or or large residential development.
But I mean, the total.
Gotcha, okay.
So I I. While we'll vote on the waivers, all in favor?
Alright.
Ah, okay, and I'll entertain a motion to waive the fee and move open space.
Okay, I'll I'll, I'll mo- I'll motion, your motion?
I wish my Mr. Albert second, so time, discussion. Right.
Uh, the the building looks really great, I might understand that the four orange things, are those gonna be bays or?
Yeah, sure, garage bays.
And they're now their storefront?
There is this, so this is the building and this is the covering that, this is section, you're just covering that over the building. Um, so this is going to have an improvement where they have a.
Basically, there is three rooms to play glass for the storefronts, three and four six footed garage doors. The little cars headed out from the front, except on the side where they are now.
That's it.
So you can see, that's what the front will look like on this.
Those bays that were remaining open all day during working hours?
The doors? I'm not sure. I mean, it will probably depend on the weather and how busy the weather and moving the stuff in and out, so.
So you're changing the storefront to their folding garage bays?
The doors, the doors right now, the business is normally closed. And uh.
But during business hours, they'll close those are the open.
Open for a car to drive in or close.
Right.
Close, of course.
And the the awnings over them and the architecture on that, the the doors will be redesigned in there. And even if they're open, you're not gonna. Look into them, that's.
Any other comments on that, cause that's. Any other comments on that, because that's still our all plan?
Again, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is just the fee and move motion, and then we'll go to reform.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Alright. Um, Ron, if you wanna review the conditional approval form?
Again, Mr. Engineer, planning module approval or exemption needed, yes or no?
No.
Written certification from Smithville Tour Authority or other authority for hookup and availability, no. Written certification for Broadhead Creek has to hook up or no, or capacity. Hunter County Planning Commission review. I think so.
Yes.
That was done, right? So it doesn't have to be done, it wasn't. Hunter County Conservation District review at any time.
So we ask for a waiver for the E and S approval because it is under an acre, so it's not required by them.
Okay.
It's on the apartment.
But they, you just got approval for the waiver. So that means that we don't need Hunter County Conservation District approval.
Correct.
Any soil erosion, sedimentation, or other store water type plans? That's all been included in the land development, so highway permit or. End dot highway permit or township driveway permit?
Yeah.
Any other permits like NPPS, general permit for, et cetera?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna put in your compliance with all conditions set forth in your review letter of August fourteen, if they have all been met terrific, so I'm gonna put it in as a. So just so as to compliance, okay. Uh, do we need a dedication for any streets? Need a dedication of that easement. Alright, for our grand easement along, what are we gonna say? What road is along to?
It's along Milford Road and along um. Franklin Hill.
Okay, do we need any uh? Other types of any other miscellaneous agreements or any type of.
No.
Do we need an improvements agreement? I don't believe so.
Alright, we're gonna need a maintenance agreement.
Bailey? Go ahead. We've got some landscaping.
We do.
Probably need a improvements agreement.
Alright. Well, again, whatever you tell me we'll need, that's what we will do, sir. You will do a quantity and cost estimate, and then tell me what we need to include in the agreement.
Are we gonna need a maintenance agreement for any of these improvements? Yes, for the landscaping.
Alright, park recreation fees have just been waived, correct?
Correct. We have monuments, pins, markers, set in the field, or certified, to be certified agreement, then no, I believe it is, okay. Uh, plan to be signed, plan to be notarized, and salvo waivers to be noted on the plan. Alright, so again. And I bring this over to you, I'm gonna ask you to look at this, if it needs your approval. I'm gonna ask the society to review it with your application, it's kind of the big guy here, okay? Take your feet and put those studs inside and then the house or whatever.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on Rocco's Collision Land Development Plan. The approval of that, subject to the conditional approval form of August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Do I hear that motion?
Motion.
This is my Mr. Albert.
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert. Any other discussion?
For the next.
Mm-hmm. So. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Make sure that you get a copy and your any professional get them too, thank you so much.
Yes.
Two, one, I mean, we have like twenty-five minutes, huh?
Yeah. I'm I'm fine to do that.
Five minutes? It's gonna cast back, okay. It's gonna be about.
Thanks for coming, sir.
I got you, we're about to mull the time, okay?
I just bring her here for a second, but.
Two, two minutes for a couple of scrolls about.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So there you go.
Alright, we are turning session at eight eighteen P M. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the water gap wellness land development plan. With accessory building, I'm gonna spare everybody the presentation, I have a couple housekeeping announcements. So yesterday, the zoning officer obtained administrative search warrant, and today executed said search warrants of water gap wellness. Their facilities today, zoning officers issued a new determination of use, subsequently, he will file an enforcement notice. Finding that the use is consistent with a drug and alcohol rehabilitation center, and not in fact. So, with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion on this plan.
Motion to deny the plan.
Motion by Mr. Albert. Do I hear a second?
Um, I have a question, can I ask this?
You have to second it, and then we gotta go.
I'll second it.
Okay.
My question is this, I believe that we're under the gun here because this must be improved or denied by tomorrow. Correct.
Correct.
Um, I wish it wasn't so, because I've read through these violations and uh, honestly, I don't know how um. Serious or trivial they are, I just don't know. Um, there's certainly violations, but uh, I remember the hearing where we denied the conditional use, where. Were many, many more serious things going on, and actually, this seems to be um, very procedural. I wish I knew more, I wish we had some uh, expert in its facilities to tell us what standard procedures are. Uh, in the absence of that, I would say they they seem to be violations.
Alright, I'm gonna entertain discussion, and then we're gonna vote.
Uh, Mr. Chair, with respect to this matter, are there any other potential bases for denials, for example? Non-compliance with township engineer review letter of July sixteen.
You have to speak to that.
If it is in fact. Um. What the zoning officer said. Then the criteria for the positioning of the building changes of the uh, recreation building. It's different for an inn than for this facility, so that in fact would put the. Um. Land development plan in non-compliance.
Yep.
Now, and following up on Supervisor Lovinheim's comments, and I'm not meant to try to. Muddy the water, but in a sense to tend to try to somehow perhaps reach at this time some type of. De-escalation of this whole matter, the applicant can give an exception.
I think that would be nice in other matters, too.
I think we agree to the conclusion of the flexibility. Okay. Must.
I mean, I mean.
Have a different.
I'll I'll just say, I have a letter before me from the town, the township zoning officer. City finding that an enforcement notice is being going, is going out this week, based on these findings, that from my understanding. Means that regardless of the next steps and what happens with the township and this facility. As per John's comments right now, um. Uh, it seems that the the ongoing use here is not as the plans have been submitted, and therefore, it needs to be denied on those grounds alone. Um, let alone any potential future uh, legal uh. Appeals or anything that might come from this enforcement notice uh. And this new information that's been presented. So I agree with uh. Chairman Pride, that I don't, I don't see what the point is of uh, delaying.
But where where are we delaying? The enforcement notice, or?
No, approval of uh, land development to as an accessory building.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're going to deny that?
That is what the motion is on the table.
Because it's, you think it's being uses in drug and alcohol rehab?
Which, for which it does not have the right, and in addition to that, if it is drug and rehab center, then it doesn't meet the criteria as. Um, as it must, um, and for a drug rehab center.
So it's just better just to do drugs out straight? Pretty much what happens in Marshall's Creek if you have an notice, you're fucking trashy. I support the drug and alcohol rehab.
Any other comments?
Later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Julie, I think you got a copy of that letter for them.
Hi.
The next two items were about to make a copy.
On no.
Do it. Okay, the next two items are regarding the E A C, but regarding the news that we got about the chair, we don't know if there is one or two vacancies, and we had. Uh, at least two interested applicants, so I would like to table items J and K until the next meeting, so we can sort that out.
Well, uh, motion to table points A and K on Environmental Advisory Council.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Lovinheim, any questions? We got your letter, and it's good, but just wanna make sure, we got at least two.
We're good. Sorry, you you provided valuable contribution throughout the evening, so we, not we're not.
Okay.
I stopped for one year, then I gotta go later.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you for your service. Okay, any questions on that? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay, next is the discussion on the Act fifty-seven, twenty-two ordinance, tax penalty waiver provisions. Sounds a lot, it sounds different than what it really is, which really, in fact. Is an ordinance that is consistent with state law, Act seventy of twenty twenty-two.
Is this in here? I didn't see it.
It is, it is after, it's almost at the very end of the packet there.
Okay, here you are.
So essentially, it means that if you reach a qualifying event, which is the date for the transfer of the ownership of the property or the manufacturing of mobile homes, the day of the transfer. Of the ownership, et cetera, the original location or relocation, basically, when your transfer happens, if you did not receive the notice. Gives you a tax penalty, there's a form from uh, the State Department of Community and Economic Development, this just requires our tax collector to follow that policy. And thus far, we have them. But it codifies that, and uh, we join the other municipalities in doing so. So the goal from here is to get this authorized to advertise. Does anybody have any questions on it?
I do have one more comment on this.
Go ahead.
While I was doing research to draft this ordinance, um, all of the other townships I researched had the volunteer service tax credit program waiver underneath. Whatever their version of chapter twenty-four was, so there is a single line that takes our current standing, chapter thirty-two, shifts it under chapter twenty-four. In my opinion, where it belongs, that's it.
Which makes sense.
Uh, I know we're not voting on this, I was, we were just trying to move forward, but I, I'm not, can you help me out a little bit more? I'm not sure what I'm reading here.
I can figure one, um, Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two basically said that if you buy a new property, and you don't get. The the lovely card that says here are your taxes that are due for this real property.
Yeah.
Um, because the address was messed up, normally, people would have to pay a penalty because they didn't pay the taxes on time, because they didn't receive the notice that they needed to.
Okay.
Um, this ordinance permits qualifying events like that, for a one-time new homeowner, where if they didn't receive the notice because their address was messed up. Or the notice did not go to the correct address, they can say, hey, this was an honest error, and then we remove the penalties associated.
Okay, they still owe the back taxes.
Still owe those taxes, um, but the penalties for not paying them on time will be removed as a one-time.
And does it, so does it specify out how they prove that?
Yes, there's a D C E D form that the state created in accordance with Act fifty-seven, um, that that person is required to submit to the tax collector. And that form, along with the reasoning explained in that form, explains the qualifying event that occurred.
Who has the right to waive or not waive it? Or is it automatic?
Um, if the form is submitted properly to the tax collector, the tax collector is required by the law to waive the fees.
Um. Alright, and this is an act, we have to put this in.
We we have no choice, uh, this is bringing us into compliance with state regulations.
Okay. Aye.
Do I hear a motion to authorize the advertisements of this draft ordinance number two thirty-nine?
You do, so move to.
By Mr. Albert. Second, Mr. Lovinheim, discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay, discussion on parking regulations, John prepared some research on that. Um, which talked about going to demand-based. So I'm sorry.
Does this have to be done tonight?
No, I was gonna say we could, you know, get a quick thirty seconds, and we can talk about it at the next meeting if then.
Sure.
Make.
I'd like to commend John for doing this work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, the the township is considering changing parking regulations, uh, because there is a concern that. We're adding a lot of blacktop, perhaps when it's not needed. Right now, the township ordinance dictates how many parking spaces you must provide if you're providing a restaurant, a data center. An animal hospital, or residential development. Uh, the new thought process, which is starting to permeate uh, various municipalities is. The developer knows what he needs, he wants to be successful, he's not going to intentionally underpark his development. So, uh. The township is considering adding a provision to the ordinance. That in those circumstances, at least for commercial development, that the developer has the option of. Presenting an argument to the township as to how many parking spaces he needs to serve his development. His argument has to be based on sound principles, if he has, for example, if he built Wawa's. And he's got, owns five Wawa's, and they need sixty parking spaces, but our ordinance says eighty. The township would be inclined to let him just just build sixty.
Does this move it out of of zoning, so that it doesn't have to go for?
No, it doesn't, it it's worded so that.
It's waivable as opposed to?
Right.
Um.
Right.
The other.
And the rest of the variance.
Of variance, okay.
And uh.
He also.
Providing. Yeah, but you, you can make provisions for or to do certain limited. Word is making their decision on this, okay.
He also has to provide provisions for additional parking spaces if it proves that he needs them.
Well, it doesn't say that currently, that's something we're gonna do this in the future.
Oh, I thought that's.
Is that, is this actually a draft here? I'm sorry.
Yes, what's involved is the rap.
And after item Jack.
Well, I love this, obviously I've said many times, I think it's crazy. I don't want massive, massive parking lots that are sitting empty unnecessary when we're walking down a bunch of of. Trees, um, but I do think we don't have a lot of time, it's probably suspect there's some public comment. So I, I make a motion to be table this until the next meeting.
Back at my Mr. Up there, second by. Thank you to Lovenhun. Questions? All in favor? I, I. Okay, we're going to entertain general public comment, we're going to ask for your name. We live for the record, is there anything else we need on that?
Uh, I may ask you to clarify spelling, just so I have your.
Can I just say one thing, just because I like to remind for this and public comments. Because it just says public comment and there's not an agenda item specifically about a specific issue, the supervisors cannot make any decision. Today on anything that is brought up in public comment, it's a chance to share. Comments, um possibly get some information back, but no guarantee on that, but also that. There's no, I just want to make sure everybody knows, because I see a lot of new faces.
Gonna be judicious, because we're going to avoid. Plaguing comments as much as possible, so everybody can be heard.
Good evening, um, members of the board chairman, my name is Jennifer Dorflinger Peck.
Can you spell that word?
Uh, D O R F L I N G E R, last name Peck, we see. I live in Branchville, New Jersey, though I am a vested um person to this community, I have a vested interest in this. And I'm actually here tonight in response to the meeting, actually on seven twenty two, um, I watched the meeting. And it's why I've actually come here tonight, first and foremost, I support the back nine. What a traffic that. The back nine holds a very special place in my heart. It's track that shows unconditional love to every single person that has ever set foot on its soil. Something I have been a part of firsthand. And something that to those that don't bike motocross, they clearly cannot understand, as that's why we're here tonight. I read the transcripts, I've watched your meetings. And I fail to understand how a select few individuals. Have had such power perpetuated at the expense of this township. Such extensive costly legal proceedings, which all started because of sixteen non-consecutive weather permitting. Riding hours a week that span, if you're lucky, seven months out of the year. I'm fully aware that this issue is rooted in a nuisance complaint wrapped up in a zoning issue. And that the current state of the issue lies with the Commonwealth Court. It's my understanding that the back nine won their zoning rights. And the town has appealed this ruling, thus perpetuating further legal proceedings. Ron Karasak stated in last month's meeting that, and I quote, as it's taken directly from your meeting. The bill for the month was very high, over eight thousand dollars, just for the mountain manor case. I told the bookkeeper, the town can deduct a thousand dollars off the bill as a courtesy to the town, so the bill is not as severe. We need to be careful when we start providing places in court as it gets to be expensive. He then references to appeals, the injunction and other issues involving mountain manor. But that he just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of where they were at cost wise. Which begs the question. How much has the town spent in total on all of the legal proceedings since the inception of this case? How much more will be spent on proceedings that have yet to occur? I would be curious to know how transparent the town wishes to be disclosing this amount rather than having me file a request for the information. And I would also be curious to know if the town pays their bills and obligations from your general fund. Capital Improvement Fund and Professional Escrow Fund, how many of the townspeople that support the track? Are aware that some of their tax dollars are funding the very lawsuit that they oppose, mountain manor's taxes included. I also understand that the town offered for Hudson and Grant. To be able to ride on select days as long as there was a constable or police officers present. So you're willing to pay for that so those kids can ride their home track?
Ridiculous.
I stand before you today as one of the many who support this track. I stand before you as the wife of a rider, the mother of two riders. And the mother of a son who lost his job when the injunction closed down the track. I stand before you as someone who cannot fathom how back nine, which has complied with your injunction. Took measures to address concerns about noise levels built regarding. By building a sound wall to mitigate concerns and kept their own children. For riding the very track that was initially built for them cannot seem to be recognized for all of the positives. That have been brought to the lives of so many. Make no mistake, the love that we have for this track is bigger than the few that seek to close it down.
Will never go away. It will never go away.
While initially I had empathy for the perceived reality of those that had a complaint. The lack of compromise coupled with the continued complaints is nothing short of disrespectful. Zach wasn't polished in his delivery to you last month, but make no mistake about his passion. And his love for that track and the burn voice, it's real. It speaks volumes of his commitment to what that track means to him. There's no de-escalation training, but an impassioned man is speaking from a place of love. And frustration at how this whole matter has been handled.
Illegally.
Hudson, Grant, Zach, Lisa and Mike are not alone in this fight. I, we stand here today as proof that this track is bigger and more meaningful than a select few. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Name, P W O S B, O G, L E, S V Y. I reside in Egg Harbor Township, New Jersey.
Sorry, what township?
Egg Harbor Township. Yeah, I'm gonna come at an angle for that back nine track that. It's not just a facility. It's a huge family, if you can't see, I live three and a half hours from me. On a Tuesday night, I'll come up here to support my family. We spend thousands of dollars a week for our kids to stay off the street. Thousand dollars a week for our kids not to touch drugs and alcohol. Thousand dollars a week to make sure my son are with his best friends, right? Let me tell you straight up, this. It's not, it's a very hard sacrifice for parents to do what we do for our kids. I live in Langsley, I'm three minutes out of Langsley, New Jersey. I don't live in no backward situations, we live in the hood. I gotta have a place for that boy to ride. It is not fair for my kid to be involved in the streets. We set up places to ride. I remember when they first did the track, them three boys right there, Bubba, Honey and Grant was out there with shovels. Making a place for their self to ride, to safely ride their machines. They're fully geared up, the machines are fully serviced for their safety. And I understand there was complaints. But then we say, these kids sit in the house or they don't iPad. But then we give these kids something to do and now they don't have nothing to do, because that's all they know. We travel from Maine to Florida racing dirt bikes. Living campers, literally, living out of campers, half our lives. They give these kids something positive to do. And it's hard because, you know how many times you can't afford it, but you can't tell your kid, no, you, we ain't going racing? You know what happens? Another family backs you to make sure your kid can go racing. It ain't just a one-person sport, it ain't, it ain't, the parents ain't even on the machines, but the parents gotta do it for the kids. And I can't put my kid with half those kids that live in our town because you're making a wrong decision. I gotta drive three and a half hours to fit my kids with positions with positive kids as going something with their life. And it's very hard when. Those kids have something to work for. We gonna go in there and do our schoolwork so we can go ride. We gonna go in here, mom said, your mom said clean your lung, we gonna get the run clean so we can go ride. But now, which I feel horrible for, them two boys can't even ride on their own property. And it has, it has to be a change, it has to be, it has to be. Somewhere where we can come to agreement that. A little give and take on both ends that we should be able to provide something for our kids to do in a positive manner. This world is in a bad situation. First thing in our lives is Jesus. What we teach our boys, they're here, Jesus Christ, we, all of us pray together. We pray together and race dirt bikes. We're not riding dirt bikes on the street. We're not wheeling dirt bikes up and down somebody's sidewalk, we're in a. A space with safety. That they can do what they have to do. It's a very hard situation when you take that away from them. And they're saying dad, I need, I wanna go, go ride, I wanna go ride, where, where do we have to do? Where can we go? You know, it's, and it's a. I understand where you come at and I understand safety and all that, there's. It's all there, accidents happen, accidents going to be part of anything you do online. I can go get a kid a soccer ball and go break his arm, you know? And this is, this is not just. This is our sport. Our sport may not be normalized the most. But this is what our kids know and this is what we know as a family to provide for our kids. So I need you to look at, when you're looking at, dang, we don't want to open that up. But what do we have for these kids that they love to do? We're not the ball, we're not the ball parents, we're not, you know, our kids ain't into the ball sport. Our kids are into their machines. I guarantee you right now, them boys right there can rebuild dirt bikes, change tubes, change tires. That's our thing. When you ain't riding, you're in a garage, you're servicing your dirt bike, you helping your boys service their dirt bikes. So we want to keep these kids off the street. If we give our kids to the street, we fed. If you allow us to give our kids the street, you failed us. We don't, we don't want, none of us wants to fail. The Lord put us together to work together. So gotta be somewhere, somehow we can all work together and do this where. We can keep our kids moving in the right directions. And it's not every day, but guess what? The passion for these boys and their machines is every day, every second of their life. Them boys talk on the phone all day long. They talk about their machines and the Lord. That's what we teach. The Lord's first in your life, your family, whatever your machine, you, you and your machine got going on, get it done. We traveled everywhere with this family. They didn't call me, they called me today, David, what are you doing? I'm, I'm wrenching, I own a shop, that's all I ever did was wrench my whole life. Okay, I, I'd be up, no problem, I drive three and a half hours. Why? Because I would do it for my son to have somewhere safe to ride. I would do it for the kids and their community that didn't have nowhere to go. They come there and they just came here to help out and guess what happens? They learn how to ride their bike, they learn how to work on a machine. Yes, we're actually being a parent and not giving them a device and doing what we want to do. We're actually parenting our kids the way we know how to parent. We're actually giving these kids opportunity in life. So please don't allow y'all to fail us. Because we're depend, we're all depending on everyone to make this situation happen, thank you.
Hello, my name is Damian, uh, last name D Z I E, D V I C. And I live about five minutes from here in Milton-Mifield Township. And uh, I guess we're talking about the consequences that you guys maybe don't realize. This area doesn't offer a lot of uh development for your young men. And most of us have turned to drugs and alcohol and all other types of uh vices. And uh. Even though they're sitting at this meeting today, listening to you guys talk, so the one contract, you only had one bidder. This is what raises strong men. They're the men that built America, we're the ones that are first responders, we're the one that protect the country. And if you're gonna continue to get rid of these. Self-development facilities, I guess I call them. You're gonna continue to go down and uh, even you guys said, there's commercials that. There's only industrial and residential, so you got the choice of getting swallowed up by Amazon. Or allowing us to uh do what we love to do. Thank you.
More than just a sport, pass. Zach Lotto, see you guys know me. The uh, the appeal uh for the zoning, which. Quite frankly, I don't think we need a special exemption because motorsports activities have always acted at mountain manor. And Robert, he's, he's been there, he knows all this and it's nice of you to finally show back up to work. How long were you gone in Spain for? A month, two? And now you show up. Appreciate you being there, you're doing a great job, bud. And all of this stuff that we're dealing with now, you, you have been a part of. You've been there and you've avoided us, we've had questions for you. We, we wanted to oppose you and you've avoided us for months, for months, on fucking purpose.
Why?
Because you have all the answers. All this is being held up because of you, probably you too. I don't think you really know much about what's going on, unfortunately, I, I, I like you. Seem to have your head on straight more than these two measles. And yeah, yeah, it's you guys, especially you, Ron, you're dragging it out, why are you dragging this out even more? Why aren't you submitting your stuff to the court for the appeals? You just keep dragging it out and it's great because you're pampered, you're pampered, your pockets open. Our lawyer's pockets open, you guys are just loving this, just loving this. And we're just gonna just keep perpetuating it at the cost for Tammy Booth and this lady. You guys say I'm aggressive, this lady at Country Hill drove by and flipped me off the other day. She flipped me off, driving by, and I'm the aggressive one, Miss Piggy over here is gonna flip me off.
Why you gonna stop?
And then, and then, and then, I guarantee you at the end of today, her husband, every meeting I leave here, her husband's out at the end of the driveway going like this. Uh huh, every single fucking time I leave here, every time I leave here. And you guys make me to be the bad person because I have a voice. And I, I, I really appreciate my rights and, and being able to talk fucking freely. So, just know, and then also, um, I'm not sure where Oliver is, come here Oliver. Oliver. Oliver works at the track, he is uh our, our main staging guy, Oliver, not a person goes by with what? Oliver, tell them what, what you check the gate.
Homemade.
Yeah, and then what?
Make sure that it's what Oliver checked their chin, what does it have to be?
You get nervous, aren't you, bud? Yeah, it's alright, fuck it.
It has to be buckled, right?
Yeah, so Oliver, Oliver works with us every, every day that we're open, he is here with us. And, and the same people.
And he rides a dirt bike.
Yeah, Oliver, Oliver.
Like we say, right there, can't even talk to nobody.
Oliver.
Wanted to ride a dirt bike.
Oliver's with me every week and uh we teach him a lot and at the same time, the people you guys are defending. With taxpayer money are standing on the property line calling us, these two. The R word, the R word, and you guys are up here defending them. Good job, guys, you're doing good. This is what we have to deal with and we're the ones that are getting constantly attacked. Anytime I go up and I mow my grass by the property line, the booths are out there videotaping me. Doing anything they can, verbally harassing me, calling me and my kids the R word. Uh, they're also, anything under the sun, Tammy's telling me I smell, I look like I smell, I'm sorry. I, I actually have a, a job, I worked my ass off. So um, if some of you actually could do your jobs and, you know, submit the stuff and stop delaying. Because everyone knows, he's even said it, he knows that the noise ordinance won't work. Upper Mount Bethel, they have a fucking dusty ass noise meter. You guys all know your noise meter, you're not fucking noise certified, that's a fucking joke. That's a fucking joke, if we were noise certified, you would fucking find me for a fucking noise violation. But you can't because you're out there with your cell phone looking like a dickhead. When are you gonna stop? No, 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 I, I'm cool, I'm really cool, I'm fucking great. So, when is it gonna stop? When are you gonna do something? Everyone just keeps fucking spinning in circles because he said legally, we know we're right. You talked in the special exemption about adding rules in the special exemption because. If someone were zoned resort, they could come and build more cross track, just like the back nine motor cross track did. Holy shit, you guys are fucking up, you're just dragging this fucking out at the expense of what, her? Her and fucking Tammy, so they can sit there and fucking say vulgar things. Mm-hmm, so you guys are doing a fucking great job.
Terrific.
Patrick Stoffler. S T E F F T N E R. I live over in Hope, New Jersey. Ron, I'd like to start with you, cause you're not paying attention to one thing, can I have your attention, sir? Can you look at me while I see you like a regular man?
Sir, I'm going to need your name.
Don't go Rogers.
Don't tell me what to do, young man, sir.
Don't tell me what to do.
I would like to speak to you. I'd like to start with you, you got any children? Do you have any children?
Yes.
How old are they? You don't know, we gotta think about it, let's go on the next slide, John, you got any kids? What do they do, what sports do they like?
Play all sports.
They play all sports, right? Did they ever ride a dirt bike or a bicycle or anything?
Rode bicycles.
They rode bicycles, right? Mike, how about you, you got kids? I'm sure you do, right? You got kids as well? No kids, you got any kids? Hello?
Yeah, I don't answer you because there's a court case on this and I can't say anything and I won't.
Because you know you're fucking right.
You guys don't even know who I am, you know nothing about me, I ask you a simple question, do you have kids? What does that have to do with the court case?
Just as a reminder, this is a public comment period.
Bottom line is.
It's a comment period.
Bottom line is you got a bunch of kids here at nine o'clock on a school night, a bunch of dads that worked all freaking day. We came out of our way from all over creation to support the Burns and the Back Nine and Zach. We're not going away, plain and simple, we will not go away.
He got one, but we're not gonna do.
Yeah, no, it's supposed to be last thing, um. There should be a lot more people here that half my generation is gone. And they were still here, I guarantee you that they would be here trying to wait, so that's all, that's all going there, one minute.
My name's Alisa Byrne, and um, I am the mom of Hudson and Grant. And I just wanted to make a few notes because I'm not quite sure how tran- transparent you all have been. With the township and with the people that are having the nuisance issues with the track. Um, when I opened the track um, at the Back Nine, Robert, you were there the day that we opened. You trespassed on my property and you took my merchandise and threw it on the ground and cursed me out. Yes, you did, yes, you did. Uh, we had multiple conversations about opening the training and practice facility right here in the beautiful Pocono Mountains. We are situated on a lot of acreage. We intend to keep that space green and we intend to pass that on to our children. So that we can keep the sport of motocross alive and keep the Poconos green and beautiful as it was intended. Um, you know, I also feel that, I don't know if you've been honest with people about the fact that we did come to you. And we did try to settle this before there was any injunction or any legal issues. Um, the track, I was told by your former zoning officer Ken Wolf, who we did depose. We also deposed Michael, he gave us a lot of information under oath, a lot of truth, thank you for being honest about all of the mess. That you guys have created. You let go of Ken Wolf, Ken Wolf came onto my property six times. He broke bread with my family. We intended to keep a relationship with you to make this a joint venture, you supported us doing this. You were all for the green space, you were very proud of the efforts of my children and my family in this sport. You were looking forward to their achievements all across the country, making East Stroudberg a name on the map for our athleticism. Right, like these kids worked really, really hard. You gassed us up and told us. Great idea for the community. Right, until one neighbor complained, you told us to go up to her home and to win her over. So you know what I did? Ken Wolf told me that I could operate a motocross track twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Per my zoning on the deed to my property, which we have owned for over a decade. We have been residents in this community and rode dirt bikes right up the road with these people. All of these people rode before we opened the Back Nine for over a decade safely. Without your permission, we came to you, we came to Ken, we came to Julia. What permits are required? What permits are required? None, Rivers Edge Bike Park has no permits, correct? You told us we needed no permits. We have followed all of your legal BS. My children have not rode in our backyard in over ten months. Because we are law-abiding citizens, please let me speak. We are law-abiding citizens. We have not violated any of the things that Judge Zulik has asked of us. This one has, I'm not quite sure if Tammy Booth and our neighbors are aware that they've offered to settle with us. They know we're gonna ride dirt bikes on our property, second days a week, twenty-four hours a day when this is over. Because when we get to a higher court, we will win. Because in black and white, the law's on our side. You know this, Ron especially knows this, he's quite, gotten quite friendly with our legal counsel. They talk a lot. They offered for my children to ride two days a week, did they tell you that? They're letting us ride our dirt bikes, they offered for us to ride two days a week, provided that you guys provide. A paid for constable to watch us, two township officials are gonna be there. Which one of you are gonna come to my property and watch my kids ride?
I go Robert.
We chose not to take that offer from you, we're gonna wait for your next offer, actually, we're gonna wait till we go to court. Because we will win this case. But in the meantime, I would like to return to the status quo prior to opening the Back Nine. And I would like to allow my family and my club members to ride in my backyard. Because that's what we did before any of this happened. So I do think that your negotiation and your, we sat in this room and negotiated, and you know what this gentleman and this one and this one told us? Take the motocross track off the table, we'll give you all the permits, you could do all the development you want. Take the motocross track off the table, no shop. No shop. You told me that day you came, your husband has a lot of irons in the fire, you better be careful, correct? You told me that, you said if you choose to continue to ride the dirt bikes, there's gonna be a lot of trouble for your family, didn't you threaten me with that? You did, you did, and guess what? I believe it is within our rights to do what we want to do on our property. So I beg you, I beg you to consider the fact that what you are robbing this community. I have hundreds of letters from children, grandparents, parents. Former people who have struggled with issues that come and ride dirt bikes in my backyard. I have provided an environment that is safe, that is conducive to what it is we need to do to prop these kids up. All I'm asking you is that you consider not wasting. Hundreds of thousands of dollars we are spending, right, Ron? Trial is going to be very expensive, Ron, everybody listen up. Hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars so that we can eventually open up. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
We're gonna keep going. All our letters have been thrown in the trash, so you're gonna listen.
Actually, at the beginning of this meeting, we said that this meeting was.
Enough, enough, enough. You gotta just stop. Hold on. You just gotta stop.
I made a motion.
You're, you're driving, so many people, all of these kids got school tomorrow. You wait, whoever, I wanna thank whoever made the list to make us last on the list, knowing that the school kids here. And they all got school tomorrow, don't give me the face, don't, don't, you knew the kids were gonna be up past their bedtime. Be late for school, don't look at the ceiling, shake your head. Because we've been frustrated for over a year now, and you guys are delaying, 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 and you won't stop. You pushed the meeting back to the last, listen, ninety percent of these people here have waited to three hours to build a bridge, build a road. You knew exactly what you were doing, stop it, just please stop it, enough. Let the kids be fucking kids, let them not go do fucking fentanyl and heroin and drink. Let them go be involved with motorsports, let them learn how to operate a motorcycle. There's so much good that's going on, I, I just can't believe that all of you sit here. And you know exactly what you're doing, here, stupid, see the hat? Donald Trump closed the border seven fucking months as president, the last three months, zero. He made everything happen so quick. What are you guys doing? What are you doing? Tell me. Oh, sure, Robert, you wanna go?
Yes.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, we want all, all the kids wanna go home and go to sleep, Robert.
Maybe a motion to adjourn.
How about embarrassment, you should all be embarrassed of what you're doing to this community. They ride from three years old up to six plus. You made us play, now we're making you win. They pulled the plug on this now.
Thank you. I, I know that they're going out of uh, or. We can adjourn.
If you want.
John, go ahead, Tom.
I'll, I'll make a motion to allow this last gentleman to speak.
No, we're gonna keep going.
I made, I made a motion.
Motion, we're not gonna adjourn this meeting to Robert. You're jerking us around, we're gonna jerk you around.
My, my name is John Collins, C O L L I N S. Reside in Long Valley, New Jersey, just over the river there. I'm inspired from a little service, public speaking is not something that I do on a regular basis. Um, I know that there's a lot of people here with a lot of, you know, impassioned statements to make to you guys and. And I'd, I'd at least like to try and all of grace to you as professionally as I possibly can, um. I'll try and keep it brief, I know there's a, a lot of people here, I know that it's not fun when something's dragged out past when. You know, on purpose, on purpose, or whenever, it's not fun having something take longer than it should. And uh, to give you a little bit of context to how I ended up in this room before you guys, uh, from. Twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, I served my country in the United States Navy as part of Naval Mobile Construction Battalion Eleven.
And for your service.
Thank you, three, three deployments, uh, one to Spain, one to Israel, I was actually there the first time. Hamas started shooting at us, it was a stressful two weeks, and then my final deployment was to the island of Guam from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Um, when you're gone for five years, a lot of your friends, you know, they go their separate ways, so. I came back, I didn't really have anything. And uh, you can take, take my words however you want, but. About a year and a half ago, I didn't know a single person in this room, and. I started coming over the river to East Stroudberg because total strangers who had no idea who I was. Introduced me into the culture that had really given me a purpose to live again, and. You know, it's a little, it's really, really hard for me when I. Found something that gives my life a lot of purpose and a lot of meaning. Not far away from home, somewhere that makes it accessible to me, closed down. And I can't speak on why it's closed down in detail, so I won't. I will speak that everyone behind me has been really good to me and. It helped me out a lot and holding back little emotions that apologize, so um. Whenever um, whatever might be going on between you guys, Zach. And the Burns family, I understand that it can be frustrating on your end. But just, all I could ask is, please understand that the closure of this place is not just affecting that family. It's not just affecting the Burns, it's not just affecting them, it's affecting a much wider community at large. And I'm a member of that community, quite proudly, so. I appreciate your time, I appreciate you giving me the space to voice all of this. So, that's all I got for you.
Sounds fine.
Thanks. Thank you.
My name's Paul Fodora, I've been here before at one of the earlier meetings, I doubt any of you remember me, one of my fondest high school teachers told me, you wanna make a difference?
Sorry, last name, please, can you spell it for me?
E O D, E O R I.
Thank you.
One of my fondest high school teachers told me you wanna get involved in making a difference in your everyday life, you get involved with local politics, not the big politics. That's what brings me here. Now, I don't reside here in this township, I kind of reside in Easton, doubt any remember that from last time I was here, but I was thinking about moving up this way. The time, you know, that was back when I first started, started up. Uh, what got me away from moving into this area at the time, my mother unfortunately has health issues, which they weren't aware of at the time, she's had brain surgery next month. Now, I talked at that time when I first came here about the benefits to the community that motocross brings. Now, if you keep this track shut down, I'm just one example of the kind of people are gonna stop from moving out this way. I don't know how much longer I have left in my mom, but. Heaven forbid she does pass, I would like Back Nine to be able to move out this way and become part of this community. I work at UPS, I'm a maintenance electrician there, make six figures, I'm also a shop steward for Amsterds Union Global, seven, seven, three. I know how negotiating works, I'm quite frankly disappointed that some sort of agreement hasn't been worked out yet. To allow them to be open for at least some time of the year, couple days a week, whatever. I'm disappointed that some agreement has not been made yet. I find it very American and very disappointing that we have not made some sort of agreement yet, and I blame the township more so than there, but. I'm sorry, I gotta cut it there.
My name is Alex Brown, Alexander Brown. Um, like well, I live in Easton, which is uh, not very far away. And uh, like a lot of people in this room, I'm, I'm frustrated with the process. Um, I guess the thing that I would like to add, um, is that. It's hard to articulate what a good track is, and people who ride motocross have difficulty articulating like what's a good track, what's a bad track, what's a safe track? Um, but, you know, despite all of the friction between the Burns and Zach and you guys, they're really good at what they do. That track is among the best in the state. Um, and it just so happens to be the closest for a lot of people here, um, not everybody. It's one of the places that is the most welcoming of all the places to ride in the state, um, that I've been. So uh, I just wanna kinda echo what's been said. Um, but also, I wanna say, as somebody who studies vehicle safety for a living, it is a safe place to be, a safe place to ride. Okay, thank you.
So we can hear you, young.
Well, thank a lot of people know me by now, um, I'm Becky Austin. Um, first of all, zoning does bits their criteria, which I've been telling you guys numerous times. Robert, we had private conversations about it, they're allowed to do it. Second, you know, um, you're going, you're dragging all these residents. Especially the seven thousand residents that are not aware of what's going on, you're wasting our taxpaying money going to court. And I'm pretty sure next year, you're probably gonna give us an increase to cover these expenses. So, think about it. You know, either you come to an agreement with these and you are taking stuff away from kids that have a safe place riding. Cause when my son had a dirt bike, I had to travel three hours away to, for him to drive. He dropped in my, um, backyard where I created a safe place for him, but neighbors complained. Um, we also got, what was that called that we put on the muffler? The silencer? That's the way he had to drive his dirt bike in my backyard. So, you need, let this kid to drive their dirt bikes. Trust me on this.
Robert made a motion to adjourn. No, we're not done yet. We're not done yet.
I'm done.
This is the one.
Hey, we know you're a fucking loser.
Um, Sharlene Spazin, um, I just wanted to say as supervisors up here and, you know, seeing these kids, seeing everyone that's here. I'm very disappointed in you guys, honestly. Like, you need to do better. I'm sorry. I've been watching on Zoom. I've been trying to come to as many meetings as I can. I mean, we're paying Mr. Carisad. I think it was the last, was it last member, the last meeting? Um, I mean, Zach pointed out, um, someone said that he did something on social media. Or he just took their word for it. Well, that's our money. That's all the residents' money. And he's not even going to look into it to see if it's factual? That's embarrassing. So, we're paying an attorney to, oh, well, I just, I don't go on social media, so I just took their word for it. I don't know. That's, I have a problem with that. And, I, I mean, we just need to do better. I mean, look at these kids. Look at them. You know, look at their faces. Why are we dragging this out? And if what it's zoned for is what these people are saying, why are we wasting money? Why are we allowing this to happen? Shameful. That's it.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Your turn. See you, Robert.
Checks. Check.
And Robert's signed.
Yes, also that was a lot rare.
Well, I brought up a conversation we had out here.
Yeah.
I brought it up in the presently crowded traffic center, social membership, so soon as we have it on.